Go ahead and call our meeting to order. Thank all of you for being here. It's great to see this good crowd here, especially when it's so cold outside. So, thank you for coming. Since we have a lot of folks here who aren't going to be here, we do have an opportunity for public comments coming up. If you'd like to fill out a slip, it's just right over there. You just fill out your name and your address and just pass it there to the end of the table for the town manager if you happen to pass around so you can be able to take your free minutes and we'd love to hear from you. So, we have called our meeting to order. We'll begin with our invocation and our pledge. And just as we go to that, Mayor Pro Tem Devaney will lead us in prayer just a moment. I want to be sure to remember all those folks in Los Angeles and the surrounding area with all the loss of homes and the loss of lives. And then, you know, continue to remember everyone in Western North Carolina, you know. That is still fresh on everybody's mind. There's still a lot of folks without homes over there and so we're very concerned about those folks as well. So, Mayor Pro Tem Devaney, if you would, please.
Thank you. If our devane would please bow your head. Dear heavenly Father, as we gather here tonight to start a new year, we thank you for all of our blessings. We want to continue to honor you. We ask that you help us to take this time as an opportunity of restoration. As it says in Psalms 80:19, "Restore us, O Lord, God Almighty. Make your face shine upon us, that we may be saved." As we recommit to you a new year and relationships, we ask for your wisdom and leadership. Lord, help all of us to work as a team for our dearly loved town. Continue to watch over us and in your name we pray. Amen.
Thank you. I'll ask Councilperson Robinson if she will lead us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Moving on to item three, our introductions. I ask for town manager, if he will, to start their introduction.
Please, all of them, town manager.
Jim Hoffman, county attorney.
John Doggett.
Keith Clay.
Lynn Williams Devaney.
Tim Sessions.
Janelle Robinson.
Jonathan Hamilton.
Because Jeff Bacon, holdover acting deputy.
Holdover, what a type. Well, hey, still appreciate it nonetheless. Item number four, consent agenda. Is there a conversation on the consent agenda or someone would like to make a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I would like to note that there should be some changes and Mason has already changed some of them as far as the meeting minutes on 6/25 and 12/10 is just how the votes are recorded. So, I would like to take those amended amendments or we vote to amend them as he did. And also, I was wondering if possibly we could remove item 11H. I don't know if anybody else agrees with that or not.
Where does item H come from?
I know I had inquired about it, if we had one and what it was.
Yeah, and we talked about putting it on there, but with everything else that's on here, I'm hesitant removing it.
You can always bring it back, a different one.
There's also, is it item 4C1? And on there, there is a change in the names on the resolution to make the resolution correct.
4C1?
Yes, sir.
Has everyone, I'm sorry, let me ask this question. Has everyone seen the changes that the clerk made on the original minutes that you were talking about?
Yes.
Okay, all right. And the change to C1, is everyone familiar with that change?
Yes, sir.
Okay, okay. Any, what else?
And then just remove that 11H. I made the motion that we take these amendments into consideration and then approve the agenda as amended. Is anybody else?
So, we have a motion to make an amendment to the agenda. Do you have a second?
Second.
Have a motion of second. Any further discussion on the changes requested to be made to item 4B, item 4C1, and to remove items 11H? Any discussion? Hearing now will call the question. All those in favor of making those changes to the consent agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries unanimously. So, now, would anyone like to make a motion to accept the agenda as amended?
I'm going to accept the agenda as amended.
And I'll second.
Have a motion of second. Further discussion? Hearing now will call the question. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, and motion passes. Item number four, I'm sorry, item number five, announcements?
Mr. Mayor, I have a few announcements for everyone. On, let's see, we're going to have the Rabies Clinic and it is the 18th, is that correct, Mr. Mayor? At the community center, which is here, and it's from 9:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m. So, that's this Saturday. Also, Martin Luther King Day and inauguration day is on Monday, so the town hall is closed. Also, just wanted to put it out there that we're still looking for sponsors and vendors for Founder's Day. So, if anybody wants to participate, if they will email me, call me, or you can also email or call Mrs. Dockery at Town Hall, either one of us are happy to help. And if you want to participate in the Founder's Day parade, that link is online. Just go to the website and you can just sign up there. And also, on behalf of the Founder's Day Committee and the citizens who voted, I wanted to announce the grand marshal for Founder's Day this year. And that person is going to be Mr. Danny Nelson. He was elected solely by the community and him in votes. So, thank you, Danny.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Did you get a lot of participation?
Considering the number of people that participated and we have, what, over 11,000 citizens, not as much as you would think, but it was, it was pretty.
Seventy-one percent.
Something like that, yes. So, I think that is all I have. So, thank you.
Okay, other announcements?
The Rabies Clinic will be here even if it's raining. We'll try and pull the drive-through, but if it doesn't work, we have the inside and we will have it regardless, rain or shine.
It's free, right?
It is free. All animals. Don't see somebody bringing a horse in here.
I'm not as big as you.
Mr. Manager, you have any other announcements?
I'm not sure about this, I was.
Okay, item number six, emergency services report for the Summerville Fire Department and the Gilbert County Sheriff's Department.
The Summerville Fire District reported the following for month of the month. Fire rate calls 19, EMS rate calls 55, other calls 35, total calls of 109. Also, they installed four child safety seats. The Gilbert County Sheriff's Department reported the following: 250 calls and 11 cases reported.
Thank you. Item number seven, our town activity reports for the council, head of committee reports. Any discussion on those or any committee chairman who are here who would like to provide an additional update to what's been provided?
May I ask the manager a question, please? So, Mr. Manager, this is something I was just thinking about when I was reading over all this this weekend. And when we approve the agenda, are we also approving the committing minutes or is that just that we acknowledge what they're doing in their actual committees?
I'm of the opinion you're just having additional knowledge. You don't have to approve their minutes. They're just giving you a record of what business they conduct in each one of the committees. It's more informational for you and for the public.
Okay. I just wanted to double check. Okay.
Mr. Mayor, I also have a couple of questions relating to the committee minutes I was wanting to ask our town manager.
Sure.
The historical committee meeting minutes mentioned some storage here in the basement of the community center and at the barn. What is the plan for inventorying that? What's the sort of long goal?
I'm not aware of a definitive plan for that stuff. I understand there's a lot of the historical stuff in the community that's been donated that's housed downstairs. And there's wood at the Gordon Property Barn that's kept out of the weather. But what the definitive plan is, I'm not sure of. Councilman Craig?
Are we taking inventory of what we have?
I believe the history committee is taking the inventory. But not town staff, the committee.
The committees?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Also, while you're standing, there was, you kind of didn't officially close, kind of left it open on the possible usage of fireworks. Where did we land with that?
That should be covered under old business, but I'll cover it now. It's my recommendation that we not do the fireworks. There was a recommendation from the founders committee that they wanted fireworks this last year. We contacted a fireworks company and we brought that contract to you all. As you're well aware of, you have to authorize every contract. The manager is not authorized by general statute to execute any contract without a vote of this body. And after looking at council doggets, comments, and also our parks and recreation director, I recommend that we not move forward with the fireworks at the park due to their concerns of the wildlife.
Awesome. Thank you. I'm done, Mr. Mayor.
May I just comment on that? So, just so everybody, because now all the Founder's Day Committee members are here this evening, that we can make sure that everybody is aware of our Founder's Day Committee meeting on Thursday. And the same thing that...
I will have a message relay. I will not be in attendance.
That's right, sorry.
How about sparklers? Do they give us the sparklers?
I think sparklers would be pretty safe. I think it's the noise. It sounds like artillery shells with the concern out there with the wildlife and horses and other animals out there in the area.
Any discussion or questions on the financial report?
I have a question.
No, it's, I'm sorry, it's just, it's just time for a council. I'm sorry.
Okay.
Jim?
Yeah.
Hey, thank you for putting the check registers in there. Appreciate it.
Hearing now will move on to item eight, public comments and responses from the public. Now, you have, if you would, please come into the microphone, give us your name, your address. Your three minutes will begin and you can share on the topic of your choosing. Yeah, not that we'd really be able to answer it, but if you'd like to fill us out. Okay, all right. Teresa Perrion?
Teresa Perrion, 7401 Green Hill Drive. I'm getting tired of the answer of, I'll look into it, I'll look into it. This has been going on since 2017. It's been bought to some council members. It's been bought before to our new town manager. I'm tired of getting the runaround. We had applied for an application back in 2016 and we never got to, nobody never got to hear our case. I would like the whole town council to realize this, so I know that everyone is aware of this now. And it's an application to amend the comp plan. We paid the $1,500. I don't know where it's at. I looked in the budget. It's nowhere in the planning department budget. And there's a couple of other things I've got is, I'm looking at this agenda and I'm going, or am I going to a government meeting? A lot of this, the code of conduct is already in your purple book. It tells you how to run a meeting. We all know, you know, it's very few that has anybody ever got up here and said bad words to y'all. Anything else has, emotions risen? Oh, yeah. But it's in the purple book already. And I'm trying to think, what else? But if anybody's got questions about our application that was done in 2017, you might need to get the new planner on it also, but it has not been resolved. And I would like to, our pace to be heard. Thank you.
Dwayne Crawford?
Dwayne Crawford, 1106 N.C. Highway 150 West. Same topic Teresa just spoke about. Going to add a little bit and elaborate a little bit. Question, council, is it legal to quadruple the development density in our UDO with no prior communication to the public? With no prior review by the town planning board? With no opportunity for the public to speak on the proposal at the public hearing? With, getting to what Teresa was talking about, with a standing planning department comp plan amendment application with paid fee acknowledged to be per town ordinance, proper submitted with proper fee to establish a max development density, with open public communication by the council to hold the density decision until after the UDO adoption? Is that a legal thing to have occurred? No prior communication public, no opportunity for the public to have input, with a standing UDO, max development density, standing that had not been heard, that was told we'd put it off until after the UDO adoption? And what else? And with council knowledge that would happen. I don't think that's legal. I think that's very illegal. And I think that's where we stand. As I'm talking to people, as I go forward, I'm going to start calling our UDO illegal for those five reasons I just cited. I'd like to ask that our council do three things. I request this council bring forward the standing comp plan amendment application to establish a max development density in Summerville. Got, I got copies of what the town gave back, signed and stamped by the town. We got minutes we go to. I don't think I need to do all that. I think you guys probably trust me on that, but I'll do that if you say I need to verify that what I'm saying was true. So, I want you to bring that forward. I want to request that this town council revisit the UDO and remove the quad, the quadruple, four times with the prior development, more than four times what the prior development density is. Remove that from the UDO. And number three, request that you put a rezoning moratorium in place until number one and number two are completed. Thank you.
Mr. Chad Rader?
Hello, my name is Chad Rader, resident for, at 5403 Centralfield Road here in Summerville for more than a couple of decades now. And I'm here this evening to speak specifically about the Summerville Community Park right here behind this building. But, one, some appreciation, and number two, an opportunity. So, first, I wanted to welcome our new staff members coming on board with a lot of the transition. And I really appreciate the impetus here recently and the energy to go start getting back to maintaining our park, back to base condition. So, I've seen a lot of that flurry of activity, whether it's replacing rotten boards, whether it's cleaning things up and working on that. Certainly, we appreciate the park and a lot of what the original Parks and Recreation Committee here established as far as the baseline and want to maintain that and appreciate the efforts in that. As we move forward, see a lot of activity happening and, and there's some things going on that are taking it past the base conditions that it's been in. And for me, that's an opportunity for us as residents. In the past, we've had a chance to get a lot of input, citizen input on that, whether it was that committee and we were directed, hey, go talk to the Trails and Open Spaces Committee. So, I went and attended that last meeting and really appreciate the welcoming attitude of the committee and, hey, come get involved, which is excellent. However, it was made clear to me that their mandate, their scope does not include the park under their open spaces mandate. So, there's an opportunity then with the Summerville Park and Recreation Committee, the old spark that sunset when the park was complete. And then with the trail work going on, how do we make sure in the spirit of transparency, collaboration, we have a chance for citizen input to the future direction of the park as changes start to happen, especially with the turnover of staff and change in direction potentially? So, my request, my proposal to the, to the council is to open up that avenue for citizen input, whether it's us as residents, whether it's experts that can come in with things like eliminating the kudzu or things like, how do we, how do we match this up with the 2021 master plan for parks and open spaces here in the town? How do we, you know, make sure we, we match that up with, with the direction that the town wants from the recent surveys around what the community park here does versus the athletic park? And then, you know, my proposal then would be a couple of options. One is whether it's to reinstate that type of committee or whether it would be to expand the scope of the current Trails and Open Spaces Committee, assuming they're amenable to that. But that's what I wanted to share, the appreciation for the path forward. And then how do we make sure we as citizens get a chance to, to give that input? Makes sense? Thank you for listening.
Thank you, Mr. Rader. Item 8D, council manager and/or attorney, response to comments.
Excuse me, I registered for a public comment, Gail Dunham.
These are only three I had.
She gave it to a rabies.
There's others that have called, and then first I'll leave.
Gail Dunham.
Gail Dunham, 5805 Stone Hill Drive. Thank you very much to John Doggett, to raising awareness about the environmental things that we have to take care of in the town. And no fireworks, but I think you made excellent points and I appreciate your leadership. Just a couple of questions, because I'm not sure. 4C1, did you remove that? You've removed that, correct? Or are you going to put it up next month? What's the status?
4C1, as I understand, it was a name change.
That's correct.
Okay. It's going to be then on the next agenda? I would just say...
It's still on this agenda. It's just a different name.
Okay. I would ask you to vote no to 4C. And I had sent an email ahead of time about moving it down the agenda so we could have a conversation about it. I think this is too much control for the, for the town manager and he is not familiar with Summerville. This gives him total control over the town map. And I'm, I'm opposed to that. The, it's not just being the review officer. So, I don't, I would ask you to vote no. Unfortunately, you're going to change the name, but maybe you can bring it back next time, too. The Zooli's phone service, my concern is with all these phone companies, the customer service is always to a third world country. This looks like a big expensive project. Just trying to make sure we have some... Just trying to make sure we have some locally. I'm asking you to vote, uh, and also eleven H has been removed. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, I'm asking you to vote no to eleven G for a hundred and fourteen thousand dollars to kill the comprehensive master plan. Oh, I have one, just one other thing. Um, on the town minutes, it shows the mayor voting. Um, all of this shows the mayor voting. I think the mayor does not have a vote. Um, and what I'm wondering though is that none of you noticed this.
That's what was changed in the minutes.
And you made the motion, the amendment earlier.
That's what you were referring to. Okay, the, um, the town comprehensive plan is a terrific document. It is the only document in this town that had citizen input. There was input throughout the process, meetings with over a hundred people there. Everyone voted priorities. Um, it was a very open process. This is a wonderful document. I know Lynn, the base says, oh, it's obsolete, it's obsolete and let's just trash it. But I had asked if all of you would just tell me what in here do you think is obsolete? And none of you responded. So, you know, the, as, uh, Dwayne Crawford explained, the U D O was, was tasked with, yeah, we just ran that through and no public hearing. That's not a legal document. And this one fourteen, it, it has, if you look at the contract, the contract has no citizen input. What about the sixty-five thousand dollar land use plan? Lynn, you, I've been, you've been holding those maps for two years.
Ms. Henry Condon, thank you. Ms. Byrd.
I just have a couple of questions. Molly Byrd, eighty-three hundred Wright's Farm Lane, Summerfield. Um, I wanted to go back to your committee and board reports and minutes on the agenda. Um, are those minutes or reports available to the public anywhere?
Yes, ma'am.
Would that be on the website?
Website.
Yes.
Website.
Okay, that was my question. Thank you.
Danny Nelson.
Hey, Dan Delson, twenty-five hundred, pleasure, Ridge Road. I'm not a good, uh, public speaker. Uh, I've never been at grand marshal, so that'd be a first for me. But my purpose in standing up here now is, uh, I want to thank the people that put my name in the pot, all the people that graciously or whatever, I know there's a lot of good, I guess, other people that was doing this or put in for it or whatever. Uh, I do feel honored and I wish y'all know that and I appreciate, appreciate it from the folks. It is an honor and I just want to say that and thank you. I'm not a good baseball player, basketball player. I was asked one time by Pastor if I could sing and I said, just like the point five. I've got the voice, it's real bass, but, uh, anyway, I'm, uh, still learning it by each and everything, so I'll try my best to, uh, make the best of being grand marshal. But I've got some learning to do and, uh, I appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Nelson. Glad to hear you. Now, uh, any other, uh, comments from councilor, manager, attorney on the public comments?
I'll be quick, I just kind of addressed a couple of them. Mr. Herman, you kind of took out my response, I was going to say, but I'll look into it. As far as the application to the, um, to amend the comprehensive plan for two thousand eighteen, I actually really don't know anything about that. And I assume, I think tonight we're going to talk about the comprehensive plan, I believe under one of these. Uh, so I'll ask some questions about it. And, uh, Mr. Crawford, um, same thing, I think you talked about that. It's, um, I intend to understand it, that's, that's the first I've really heard about it. Mr. Rader, yeah, very excited, where did you go? Oh, yeah, very excited about the way things are going here. Those are two great options, either expand that one group or create another one, but I do think we hit it in the right direction. So I, I can, I can see that one of those possibilities happening, I see. Ms. Dunham, um, don't believe that anyone's going to kill the comprehensive plan, but, you know, those concerns, of course, if we talk about that tonight, we can address that during the discussion.
I'd be very happy to explain it. But we don't, we don't get much time here, you know?
And Ms. Byrd, and of course I'm advocating for, uh, the town hall, so I think that's an excellent.
It's probably the most important document the town has. We, of course, you don't have time to talk about it.
And I think that if we do anything with comprehensive plan, I, I, I think we talked about, I think everybody appeared, everybody here on this side would be very open to having citizen participation and wanting that.
No, there's no citizen, in the contract, there's none.
Ms. Dunham.
Ms. Byrd, uh, glad you came and asked a question about where to find something. If you have any of those questions, again, Mr. Rollins over here, you can always call him at the number, he'd be happy to direct you anything you need. So, and Danny Nelson, uh, when I moved here, before I got involved in any of this, uh, your name was one of the first ones I heard around my neighborhood. Folks knew you, know about you, that you're one of the most helpful people, so I've heard your name all around. I'll associate it with anything as far as town related, so very thankful that you're here and excited that you're, we're honored to have you as a grand marshal, so.
Thank you. My comment right quick, I spent the last two days gathering up, uh, propane tanks to be sent up to western North Carolina for the people, so that's what I've been doing the last two days. And you're looking for more.
Yeah, you're looking for more.
I'm looking for more. Priscilla bought one tonight and I'll get them filled, get them to the right place. So if anybody's got anything they want to get rid of, contact Danny Nelson and then let the people in western North Carolina.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, sir. Any other response? Item number ten, A, twenty twenty-five county events calendar.
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor and Board. So last month, uh, the board asked that the events planner and I look at, uh, the number of events and y'all had several things that you wanted to take off because of conflicts with our sistering communities. And so this is a revised proposed calendar for the rest of the year. Just want to get your input as a group before we publish this on the website and put it out there so people can mark their calendars for, for the future.
Can we make comments now?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so, um, there's just a little typo that it's Friday, January twenty-fourth.
That is correct.
And there are movies in the park, just the volunteer lunch. And a typo.
It's Saturday, right? Is it Friday or Saturday? I thought it was Saturday, I was told Saturday.
I thought it was.
I was told Saturday the twenty-fifth.
Oh, I thought it was Friday. I, I'm sorry, the volunteer lunch.
The volunteer lunch is Friday the twenty-fourth.
Okay.
Okay. So that should be twenty-four?
Yes.
Yes.
And not, not movies in the park there? Somebody can slide, uh, slash it there?
Yes. Um, and then there was, everything looks great on here. I just noticed one thing when I was marking my personal calendar for the dates. If you look at the movies in the park on Friday, September the nineteenth at seven forty-five, and then if you go to music in the park, it says Saturday, September. So, oh, it says one Friday and one Saturday?
Yes, ma'am.
I'm sorry, okay. So it's Friday, the eighteenth?
I had to, um, work with, um, the Parks and Rec director to ensure that we, I would not be taking money from Parks and Rec for, um, travel, visit, travel, um, travel, travel return.
So Friday, the nineteenth is the movie in the park and Saturday, the twentieth is the music in the park.
Okay.
Correct?
Yes, ma'am.
All right.
And Lynn, when, um, when we started working so early, did you get a chance to look on the, um, actual events tab to make sure that the events tab showed or reflects the right dates?
Um, I did not, but Mr. Rollins just said that, um, before he actually posted his name, we were going, we were double checking mistakes, that's how I want to.
Is there any further discussion on the calendar? I don't, I don't think, we don't need to vote on that calendar, do we?
Yes, sir, I just want to get your input.
Right.
Thank you for doing all that.
Any other discussion or input on the calendar? Okay, moving on to item number eleven, new business. Item A, assessment report of town directors.
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor and Board. So as part of my job as manager, it was brought to my attention that there was some inconsistency with some of our payroll records and some of our town records. Um, and the interim town manager prior to me bought some of this stuff to buy attention. I looked into it and I did not feel like that I unilaterally should be looking into this, so I called upon the services of Ms. Beth Wood. You may recognize her name, she's a retired state auditor. She's known across the state for looking into local government, uh, challenges and investigations. So we, uh, called her in as a third party and she did a one-day assessment last week. Um, and, um, she's here to make a report in person and Jeanette's going to pass out that report to council and to the attorney. Um, so there's a record of that. So, Ms. Wood, whenever you're ready.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, uh, council members and Mr. Rollins. Um, as Mr. Rollins stated, I came in last week, um, based on some irregularities that were reported to him and I did an assessment, um, gathered evidence based on those irregularities and spent time, um, pretty much all day last Tuesday and then took some of this information back to my, um, office. And in front of you is the report. What I've done is put together a letter and on the first and second pages are a summary, if you will, of the allegations, assertions, um, that were made. And then on page, uh, three, attachment one, I have put together a more detailed, um, listing of some of the issues that were noted, um, the, uh, evidence that was used to, um, confirm or negate or to make further recommendations down the road. So on the first one on page three, there was the assertion that the former town employees were paid for accrued vacation time and other personal time off leave, which may have violated town policy. Under that first item, one former town employee was paid for sixty-six hours of accrued vacation time over and above the two hundred and forty hours earned in twenty twenty-three. And this was evidenced by the employee payroll and town policy. In looking at this, um, there was a conversation around extenuating circumstances and what the policy that the town has today allows. So I went back and eventually, initially, the policy was that anything over two hundred and forty hours of accrued vacation at the end of the year would roll into sick time for the next, in the next year. And I looked at, and then the policy was changed in twenty thirteen and that policy was changed to state that, um, the town manager had the discretion to, um, approve accrued vacation leave to be paid. And it was under extenuating circumstances. There's no justification that this person had any extenuating circumstances. I ran by the policy, um, by former L G C secretary and, uh, S B I agent and asked their opinion of extenuating circumstances. For the way it's been used at the state of North Carolina and other governments that have this policy, extenuating circumstances run to the effect of medical bills, financial hardships, things of that nature. Um, and then if you look at the minutes, uh, January eighth of twenty thirteen, which I did, you'll note in those minutes, there was extensive conversation around changing that policy where there was an automatic rollover of anything over two hundred and forty hours to bringing it back to, um, extenuating circumstances at the discretion of the town manager. And in that conversation, um, in those discussions and those meetings, you saw noted the fact that, um, there was, uh, verbiage to be put in the policy. It did not include extenuating circumstances. And then, um, another council member stepped up and said, but we need to include extenuating circumstances. So everything around that, um, led the spirit of what this policy should be is that it's looking for extenuating circumstances that have been defined across many of the governments. Now, I will tell you this in my recommendations, um, based again on conversations with the former secretary of the Local Government Commission, S B I agent, um, the fact that extenuating circumstances has not been defined. Now, again, conversation around when that policy was changed in twenty thirteen, the town had an employee who suffered, um, uh, health and safety hardship. I believe the heat went out in December. And so the extenuating circumstance there was a financial need to be paid for some accrued vacation under the current policy. It could not be, so the policy was changed to include extenuating circumstances. And that is the premise of the, um, I did not interview the former employee. If there's a deeper dive here, I would do that to confirm that that was the impetus for this policy change and the circumstances, what extenuating circumstances mean. However, my recommendation, uh, here is that the council give examples of or define extenuating circumstances. So no town manager moving forward for decades will have the opportunity to misinterpret or not go within the spirit of this council or the former council that put this policy in place. The other thing I recommend is that, um, the way this policy works in everywhere I've seen, any local government that I've worked with, uh, state government, is that at the end of a calendar year, anything over two hundred and forty hours automatically rolls into sick leave, automatically. And that is done immediately after December thirty-first. In this case, these, this person was paid in March for the accrued vacation from the prior year. So again, um, my recommendation is for council to ensure, the town manager to ensure that whatever policy you go with, that this rollover is done immediately after December thirty-first. On page four, um, continuing, one former town employee, uh, appears to have been paid for vacation, uh, time not earned. This employee, uh, was a part-time employee as of fiscal, as of calendar year. I'm so used to dealing in fiscal years and, uh, for this purposes, it's a calendar year. So for this person, at the end of twenty twenty-three, she had accumulated a hundred and forty-four, um, hours of accrued vacation. It appears that her vacation was accrued as if she was a full-time employee. And so when she left the town's employment, she was paid for all those hours, which were two hundred and thirty-seven point two hours. Um, and there's no evidence that could be located in a personnel file, in emails or anything that suggested that her status for twenty twenty-three was ever moved to full time and to accrue that amount of vacation time. And then, um, so the recommendation, um, was to get the, the money repaid from the employee, um, because again, she's been paid up for more time than she was, um, supposed to get. When I looked at the rehire letter of this employee, when she was rehired in twenty fifteen, the verbiage in the rehire letter specifically stated the employee was part-time and would be earning benefits at fifty percent. So again, no evidence to refute, um, anything else that, that I saw on this employee. Middle of the page four, there are three former employees, um, that were paid, uh, by the former finance officer for fourteen hours of personal time off and petty leave. Um, those hours of fourteen hours is made up of six hours of petty leave and eight hours of personal time off. The supporting evidence was their employee pay stub and from my findings, town policy. The town policy on petty leave specifically states that this is petty leave given to be used and is not to be reimbursed or paid out to the staff member. And in these three cases, it was. The, um, town policy on personal time off, um, it basically says that this is eight hours, given. by the town for personal time off to be used for anything. This is treated like accrued vacation. It was paid out to these three employees. And according to the policy, again, I believe this was paid out in violation of the policy, both of those items. On page five, the former town manager was paid accrued vacation time exceeding 240 hours maximum violating town policy. The town, former town manager was paid 54 hours. Again, if you go back to the 2013 January minutes, in that discussion that was recorded in those minutes, it was suggested that the being able to pay accrued vacation to employees still working here at the discretion of the town manager for extenuating circumstances. In that, those minutes, it was stated and suggested that the town manager himself would have to come to council if that's what he or she would want. In 2017, the former finance officer did bring to council at that time to give the town manager pay him for accrued vacation. The town council approved it, but with the stipulation that the town manager would never go over the 240 hours again. And if he did, it would not be paid but rollover into sick leave. There was a memo from the town, former town manager, asking the former finance officer to pay him for 54 hours. She did so, and I cannot find any evidence of board approval that this body approved that payout. At the bottom of page five, it was alleged, there was a former town employee resigned position initially on May 17th, but booked a hotel room, paid for it in advance by credit card for a conference that she was attending in August of 2025. This is after she was leaving the town. The charges for the room was $917.39. The credit card bill is the evidence to support that. Also, it was noted that through the town's records, the former finance officer on her last day paid for that credit card bill, obviously without any approvals for that bill, because anybody looking at the bill will go, no, we're not going to do that because this person no longer works here. So the town's not going to be picking up that bill. The town management currently was able to obtain $688 of that money back, but the hotel did retain $239, $229 of that money for an overnight stay. And again, the council making sure that departing employees do not have the means to put the town's finances at risk. In the middle of page six, a former town employee was paid accrued vacation, but no federal taxes were withheld from the payout. There was payout made to an employee for all of his, he's leaving the town, resigned from the town for all of his accrued vacation. The town paid him for his accrued vacation and took out federal taxes according to his W-4 form. The employee comes back and says, I don't want any federal taxes taken out of that check. And so the former finance officer gave him the additional money. Now, what I don't know is, was the whole first check canceled and a new one was given or direct deposit. But I do know that there was a total payout for the net and then what the federal taxes were. And so this person has been paid out for the accrued vacation with no federal withholding taxes. This is in violation of the IRS rules. Unless your W-4 states that you are an exempt employee, then the town has to take out federal withholding taxes. When you report what got paid out and what taxes were paid, the town's going to be held accountable for penalties, as is the employee who didn't have the taxes withheld. My recommendation is to get the money back from the employee and pay the withholding taxes that the town is liable for. On page seven, the former town manager initiated a carried-out of personal public records, possibly in violation of town policy. So the town manager initiated a public records request. The record request, the public records request did not flow through the town clerk as directed by town policy. The documentation shows that the town, former town manager felt like his public records request wouldn't be filled. And so he went straight to the IT vendor, Graham Creach, and asked them to fulfill his public records request. They did. And so the attorney has never had a chance to look at the records from the town that have been given to this former town manager. GS General Statutes 132 states that no communication between an attorney and the town can be given out unless the town agrees that communications can be given out. So because nobody at the town, not the clerk, not the attorney, nobody's seen this documentation of what records the former town manager received, my recommendation is to get a copy of those records, those records that were given to the former town manager, and the attorney look through them and certainly decide what to do with any confidential information that's been given to this former town manager. And the other recommendation is for the council to ensure that no town manager can operate outside of what they are responsible and what their authority is. And in this case, circumventing that policy, this former town manager was operating outside of town policy. The bottom of page seven, a former town employee was working and running a personal business during working hours and using town resources. There's evidence on the town service server to support the claims that a town employee has been running a personal business since 2012 and been doing it on town time and using town's resources. The supporting evidence is that there is a folder on the server that has a lot of files and data to support this allegation and this claim. And I'm recommending that whether it be done through a forensic IT audit for somebody to go back through and try and determine how much of the town's time and how much of the town's resources has been used by this employee. And then the other, it's obvious that there are some controls in place to ensure that no employee can run a business, a personal business. I mean, I see you've got a policy on secondary employment, being involved in that secondary employment, that the town is the first obligation of an employee. But obviously, for a number of years, 2012, I think to 2021, this person was running a business on the side. On page eight, these are other assertions, and I think further investigation is needed. The first ones are information technology related. This assertion was that town records have been removed or destroyed by departing staff. So because the town's IT vendor was on-site at the day of the departure of the former town manager, he admitted that the former town manager was removing, spent a better part of the day removing files from the town's server and computers.
I'm sorry, could you say it one more time?
The IT vendor, this is Graham Creach, when I asked the question, they admitted that when they were on-site, that the former town manager was removing from his computer files and for the better part of the day. I think that the town should request an IT forensics audit. And then, and this was further confirmed. So because of these assertions, your current town manager asked the, not the same IT vendor, but the company that backs up the town's data every day, every week, asked them for a download of the last backup the 1st of January. And then he asked them for another backup, what's been backed up as of June 10th. And there's 119,000 gigabytes less on June 10th than there was on January 1. January 1, I'm sorry. So the recommendation is the town should request an IT forensics audit to determine what data has been removed from the town's server and/or computer, determine what data may need to be restored that actually belongs to, because the former town manager said, I'm removing pictures, I'm removing personal files. Well, that in and of itself is a problem because you've got a policy that says you can't use town resources, town assets for your personal use. But anyway, basically it was telling the Graham Creach that he was removing pictures. But again, took the better part of the day. And then to determine if any further actions need to be pursued by the council based on this, on this action. Again, this needs to be investigated further. The data that's missing from January to June, this is based on what the assertion was and what my conversation with Graham Creach was. I talked with the vice president of sales and I talked with the person who was actually on-site. And so this needs further investigation. Also, on the bottom of page eight, during the transition from the former town manager to the interim town manager and finance officer, access to the town's IT systems and passwords were withheld inappropriately. Again, this is an assertion. I've had conversations, as I said, with the VP of Sales and the person who really handles the town's IT needs. And both of them are saying they never got a document that says this is who's going to be taking the former town managers. And so they didn't give out anything to anybody. And so they should not. I mean, people picking up phone calls saying, I want access, I want access, I want access. You do not. You, they did exactly what y'all wanted them to do, not give access to anybody. And so I believe this is already being put in place, but my recommendation was that the town council, when you've got this kind of transition, so there should be one person that handles the access to the computers and the sensitive data, and one person that handles the passwords, giving them out, taking them back, making sure, that kind of thing. At the same time, if that person decides to leave, there needs to be a plan for transition and the vendor, IT vendor, needs to know what that is and what y'all want them to do. Again, I believe given sort of the situation and conversation, I'm not sure that the passwords withheld inappropriately. I think that just Graham Creach did their job, and they did their jobs. And then bottom of page nine, town equipment was tampered with, making them inoperable until repairs were made. Per the athletic park irrigation system contractor, he's saying that a few of the sprinkler system had been removed by someone who had access to the system. The sprinklers had not been run for most of the spring and summer, and when they were finally got them running again, took quite a few repairs. So again, making sure that people that have access, once you know somebody is leaving and they're working out of notice, there really should be some controls in place because you never know what somebody might be harboring. So again, it's just, it's not personal, it's just good business. What I tell people all the time, controls, good internal controls, good policies and procedures mean that I can put anybody in that seat, take them out anytime, and things roll like they're supposed to roll. So again, we get comfortable because we work for somebody for a long time, but again, you never know what they might be harboring or whatever. So put your policies and procedures in place to protect the town against the kinds of things that I reported to you here tonight. So again, I am recommending, there certainly needs to be a forensics IT audit done for several of these issues that I laid out. And there certainly needs to be some, a deeper dive probably into the financial transactions. I'll also tell you this, there are members who have said there were boxes of records, people I've talked to, there are boxes of records on top of the file cabinets, and they're all gone now. And nobody, there's no paper in anybody's office that departed, no paper. And all of it's gone. And there's also been a citizen who saw some boxes being dumped by departing employees. So again, some things that, there needs to be a deeper dive on most of these issues. And some that I've talked about initially, again, better policies in place to make sure that these kinds of things can't happen in the future. And I'll, Mr. Mayor, take any questions if anybody has any?
I know I have questions, but that was a lot to digest. I'm going to need a moment just to kind of put some of these questions into thought.
Heath, while you're doing that, I might fall for something. Is it Ms. Luther back there? I don't have my glasses on.
Yes.
Okay. I'm going to ask them a question so that I can ask you a question, if that's okay. Mr. Rollins, Ms. Luther, there was, there's a phone that is owned by the town, it's a phone line, I understand. And that phone has messages on it that belongs to the town. What, did we have access to all of the messages or did some of those messages, are they inaccessible because some of them are using iMessage? And from what I recall, there might be some discussion that those are not accessible now. Do we know?
I am currently in custody of that phone. That was the town manager's phone. It's in my best drawer. To be quite honest, I don't use that phone, but we still have custody of it. But to my knowledge, there was no records, and there you are, that were on it. But this is the first really question about that phone that maybe Ms. Luther can answer.
So I do not have an iPhone, so forgive me if I'm saying something wrong. From what I understand, if you have an iPhone, you can have what's called an Apple ID. And if you have an Apple ID and you are texting from one Apple product to another Apple product, it goes into the cloud and you're, with your Apple ID, it's tied to your Apple ID. Because the former town manager's Apple ID had both his business and personal information, he took the Apple ID with him. And unfortunately, that means that those text messages are with him as well in the cloud with his, tied to his Apple ID. We do not have access to that Apple ID, so we do not have those records.
Would it be a good idea for us, the town, to try to get those messages that are town-related that were part of the Apple ID that he used on company property?
Absolutely. And, you know, people are thinking that the governments are big and bad because they won't let you do personal things on your assets, the town's assets, computers, telephones, whatever. What people don't understand is that anything that you put on a public device that is personal, it now becomes public record. And so it's really as much about protecting the employees as it is about protecting the town's assets. And so again, yes, you, you have to discern what is, what those texts are about. You have an obligation to discern what's there and was it important or not important. And until you get that, and the only way to get it may be through a subpoena.
That's what was my understanding, but I wanted to make sure that's what you thought.
So we just subpoena the Apple ID so that we can get into there?
You'd have to ask your attorney. I'm assuming that's the way it will go down?
So we would have to subpoena, once, if we subpoenaed the Apple ID, then we could get into the phone to see what's personal versus what's town and pull the town stuff so we can see what those messages were?
I'm not sure that that's the best approach. There are probably several ways that we could go about that. Definitely have to have some kind of action, court action to recover.
The only thing I wondered is there, because it is public. The only thing I wondered is there, because it is public, is there, through a forensics IT audit, can they recover? And that would be the easiest way. If that can be done through a forensics IT audit and recovered that way, that would be your easiest way. Because again, anything on that public device is yours.
You were talking to earlier about the personnel files containing the information about the vacation time. And of course, we see some of that information here in front of us. If we would like to see that information from the personnel files that backs up this letter, do we have access to that?
I think you would, but coming into the office and sitting down with the town manager and making sure that, you know, it's, again, controls to make sure nothing gets removed or nothing gets added.
I understand. Yeah, because I know there's always concern about making the personnel files are confidential. But as...
Council member.
As a council member, I'm not so sure where that, it's kind of gray, I actually don't know where that was.
Mr. Hoffman?
I don't understand the question.
He wants to know if, as a council member, if he wanted to look at some of the information, like I said, there was nothing in one of the employee's file that shows, in her personnel file, that shows that she went from part-time to full-time and was able to accrue all that vacation. Wants to know if he wants to come behind me and check some of those things out, my facts. Can he look in her personnel file as a council member?
The manager's controlling the personnel file.
Well, what I said was, I didn't know if under the manager's supervision that they could sit down together. Only you can answer that question.
We must look into that.
I think that they can look at certain parts of the file, not disciplinary action.
Right, right, right.
But as far as pay and benefits, that is public record. That could be requested even from the public. I mean, it's quite well-known what the manager makes. In every town, it's publicized all over the newspaper. So those parts of the personnel file, I think you could absolutely look at, but...
So, hold on just a second. You said pay and benefits are public record?
Salary is not confidential. And salary includes pay and benefits compensation.
Well, I can tell you that the Charlotte News and Observer published all of our salaries in state government every year.
On the teacher's, I'm sorry.
Yeah, it is, it is.
That's good to know, because during that period of time, there was a little, it was made sort of confusing over what we could know. Because I do believe we inquired some of that vacation time.
Well, and I think that the records that I looked at were timesheets. And there is a record of what you recruit, what you earn, what you've used and what's left over. And I'm not, that's not a personnel record, that's not in a personnel file. That's in the town and their, I would say, human resources, maybe payroll module or payroll records. Y'all use QuickBooks, so I'm not sure what's manual and what's automated.
Because during that time, I think somebody here, maybe someone could say, did anybody here ask about vacation time?
I asked, I did send an email asking.
Yeah, and did you get any sort of response that, I don't mean like a response, but a response that actually told you what you were looking for?
No.
And...
And if I could add, those letters that you were asking about, they do not have anything that's personnel confidential related. So you could see those letters.
Good, yeah. You also said on page six that a, what are you talking about? After the person had turned in their notice, I believe, is that what that was? Let me see. She turned in her notice, and then after that, there was a room book. And we were able to obtain a partial refund. Is that the new administration that was able to get that refund? Is that something that happened? Mr. Rollins, is that you that was able to get that refund? Or...
So what happened was, so I will say, her resignation letter is, there was no initial resignation letter that we can find. But there was a subsequent resignation letter that said her previous resignation date. She stated her resignation date was May 17. The charges confirmed by the hotel were done on May 21st. It was paid in June.
On the former finance officer's last day?
Yes.
She took the credit card bill from you and paid it?
It wasn't a bill, she logged into the system and just paid the charges that were today. There was no statement yet, the statement wasn't ready until the next day.
So that's why not the approvals? That's when the bill was paid?
Yes. So when...
So she paid that with the knowledge that she's paying for somebody who wasn't even there that night?
Who had resigned.
Who had resigned, yes. And was no longer employed at the time on June 10th, yes. And it was booked for the future, which was August. So it should have, had it been a legitimate charge, it would have been charged prepaid. But it wasn't, it was expensed. And so what happened was a credit came on the credit card. And when we researched the credit, we found out that the hotel was a no-show fee. So they kept one night no-show, but refunded the rest of the charges. And it was confirmed that the reservation was made after the termination date or the resignation date. Now, the only thing we have based on that resignation date is a subsequent resignation. So if that resignation date was correct, then it was booked after the resignation. If that initial resignation date was incorrect, then the town policy says employees are not to be paid their approved vacation if they do not give two weeks' notice. So then two weeks' notice would not have been given and this employee would not have been due their vacation. So I'll just leave it at the fact.
You don't have that resignation letter?
Not the initial one, I don't know if it was...
I thought, weren't we told that they were all like slid under the door on that Sunday?
We were told that.
Yeah. So are any of those resignation letters in the files?
Yes, but for this individual, she claimed that she gave one date and that she changed her date to move up her last day. But her initial resignation, there's no record of it in the personnel file. In the personnel file, all the pages are numbered. So we have ensured that no pages are missing from the personnel file. But there is no record of this person resigning on the date that they claim to have resigned.
Thank you, Ms. Luther.
Yes.
So can I ask you a question?
Sure.
This was paid on a town credit card?
Yes.
And I know because I had to go to the bank to help you get credentials to do, because I was just a check signer. So I know every single, not, well, I'm not going to say every single, but there were several employees that still had outstanding credit cards or they were still open but not being used. And we made sure all those were closed. So is there in a policy that as soon as a resignation is turned in, that credit card's taken? Or is that something we need to do going forward?
And that is not in the current policy. You can create either a policy or best practices for going forward. As we discussed several times in the past, a lot of your policies are majorly outdated because they go back to 2005, 2012, 2013, '11. They're majorly outdated, they need to be updated. And your current town manager and I have discussed it, your current finance officer and I have discussed it, and they are, they're working on it. But there's a lot to work on. So those are things that need to be put in place, procedures, policies, changes, yes. A lot of things need to be spelled out. And there should be, whenever anybody resigns, there should be an exit process, which should include an exit interview, should include retrieval of certain documents, retrieval of keys. And we know for a fact that that process was not followed. Because I'm one of them, I still had to keep town hall for 10 years. So we know for a fact that those things were not being followed and need to be followed. Proper exit interviews and exit processes.
And you were there the last few days, weren't you? At the town hall before the former manager left?
Yes, I was there Friday and Monday, his last two days.
And you were there to help transition, right?
Yes.
Waiting for the passwords. They knew you were there to get the passwords.
Yes, that was blatant and it was stated...
But again, I will tell you that Gray and Creech says, just because somebody tells them to give me your passwords or hand these off to somebody else, until this council were to put together a letter or put together a resolution to say this is the person, then Gray and Creech was probably not going to give them up.
And let me just clarify, it wasn't Gray and Creech that was supposed to give me the passwords, it was the town manager?
I don't know if the town manager should have given them to you.
He had the passwords and he sent them to Gray and Creech instead of giving them to me. And the, and it was, that was the intent of why it was supposed to be a handoff. At the end of the day, that's what was understood. That's what was communicated to the manager, that's what was communicated to me. And I even stated that blatantly, that I was not going to be in town the next day, which was the first day that he would be gone, and that I needed access to the systems. Because I had previously scheduled family matters that council knew about before I ever even came on board. So it was stated that I was going to be out of town. I needed access to the systems and I needed the passwords before I left that day. And the IT vendor and the town manager were in there when it was stated. And I was not told otherwise. And I also wasn't told that the...
Again, I would not, and I would expect my IT company not to do anything without this board.
And even to an attorney, just for safety, just keep it there and not even to an attorney.
But just what you said, you don't think that, just so it helps us understand that the manager should have given it over to Ms. Luther, would you talk about that?
Because, so if you have two people that just want to trade passwords or whatever, this board has to have control of what your IT vendor does. And so again, Gray and Creech tells me that they were not handing anything over without some document from this board.
And they shouldn't have, that's accurate, they should not have.
And so when the town manager going out the door says, "Give me the pass," somebody says, "Give me the passwords," I don't know they should have. Without a document that Gray and Creech was comfortable with. There was a point where we did a letter. And it said, name the new person. It was after the fact? I don't know how much after the fact, but...
It was the next day. So the town, so Gray and Creech informed me that they had instructed the manager what to do for the transition. I asked for documentation of their instructions to the manager. I did not get any documentation. What I did get was an offboarding checklist because apparently they had resigned and I was not told. So they were there on site that day to offboard themselves, pretty much, to get everything ready for a new IT vendor. I was not told this, I was not made aware of this. And I was, and...
Should we even make awareness, Woods, that they had resigned? Because nobody made us aware of the time that they had resigned.
I, I mean, certainly they should, I, the, I'm going to say this. Your town manager, and thank goodness you have the one that you have. I have, I know his reputation across North Carolina. And I have worked with him on one other unit of government. I know him, no other than that, other than his reputation. But again, you're putting all this information, the access to the server, access to computers, passwords, you're putting this under one person. There has to be, there has to be an awareness of the council that this person, this administrator, is going out the door. And here's our plan to make sure the new person and the right person, it should have been, the new interim is going to ask the old interim, again, is there clashes, are issues, is there whatever? It should be coming down from the council. This is what's going to happen in the instructions, should have come to you, Gray and Creech, and then this would not have happened.
So create a policy procedure going forward where if we have this transition again, there is a duty to do X, Y, Z, and it's later.
But we did ask for the passwords way ahead of time. And at that point...
And Gray and Creech said they got a lot of...
No, they asked the manager for it. And at that point, maybe it would have been ideal if the manager would have said, "We need a letter to give it to you," or "We need a letter to give it to the next person." I think it should have been between you and the IT vendor. We weren't allowed to talk to the IT vendor.
Well, yeah, you were.
Well, we were told only the manager was allowed to talk to the IT vendor. We were not allowed to contact them directly.
But you made it very clear that we need to make sure that's very thorough going forward.
Who the IT vendor works for too.
May I interject, Ms. Woods? The current policy that I've put in place on behalf of the board that I've instructed Gray and Creech, certainly it's your pleasure to change it is, is that North Carolina state law says you must have a manager and a clerk at all times, period. No ifs, ands, or buts about it. You fired Mr. Twig Rollins today, you make Jim Hoffman the manager. You do a resolution signed by the clerk with your town seal. They will take that and they will give him every password there is in the kingdom. Right now, I'm the holder of every password. I'm the master password holder. That is the policy I've installed for the time being. Again, it's your pleasure to change it, but that's the proper way it should be done, the way it was done at my last town and the way I've been trained. But you're required to have a manager at all times. The moment you name an interim manager, and you have to do that by vote with a resolution, your clerk puts the town seal on it, presents that to the IT company, says, "This is our new manager." So that's what's in place right now. So just want to make sure to rest people that the passwords are under control right now. I have them and that's the instructions I've given to them.
And of course, at that time period, the way, does it appear as though that the way everyone left and the manner that they did and the timeframe that they did, did it seem intentional to handicap the town?
That's my question, was there malicious intent?
That is a hard thing to prove. And I've had a conversation with the SBI, it is a hard thing to prove.
The SBI?
Was there a duty for...
State Bureau of Investigation.
Yes.
Was there a duty for the manager at the time when he knew that the clerk would not be there? Because the clerk is one of the state required positions. Should he have taken any steps to secure somebody before he left?
Sure. I mean, I read your policies, it's in there what his responsibilities are, yes.
Did we find any evidence that he was going to fill that spot, or try to fill that spot anyway?
I have not looked.
Okay. Thank you.
So based on the amount of money that was paid out, shouldn't have been paid out, is there a way to get that back? Just out of luck? Or what's the next step forward?
I think for the federal withholding taxes, that the employee, it's to their best interest to give that money back and let you pay the federal government. Because if you don't, you're going to get penalized, they're going to get penalized. And so that's to nobody's benefit. All the other stuff, the vacation time that the person was paid, I mean, you can ask for it. I don't know how much money it is, does it create more ill will? And if they say no, then it's going to cost you more to get it back than it was. So I think probably a true picture of what was going on and then making policies to make sure this kind of stuff doesn't happen again. And also bring into attention that there might need to be a deeper dive in some of the other financial transactions. But again, the thing that impressed me most about working with Mr. Rollins is that he has not only great town manager skills, but he understands a lot of the financial. And I've found that that's been probably the handicap of a lot of our smaller cities, is that the town manager has no idea about finances and what the numbers mean and the budget and whatever. And the finance officer can be in complete control of all the numbers. The fact that Mr. Rollins can, in fact, one of the first things he asked me, he said, "Get me a report of how much cash I got at the other town that he was at." Because he knew, he couldn't find anything that told him how much cash the town had. So again, he's got a great working knowledge of financial operations of the town as well as the operational type operations of the town.
And you're talking about a deeper dive, really your investigation was a very limited one as you were there just for one day.
Well, I was there for one day, asked for quite a lot of records and verified the things you see here.
So if we wanted you to look into more, you'd be more happy to do that.
Your forensic audit, IT audit, is the most pressing. And that my firm does not do those.
And do you...
Do you have one you can recommend to do the IT?
I can get you one.
And then I guess the other one is to do the forensics on the phone?
Well, I think they would handle that, too.
They would, okay.
If I could. Ms. Woods, based upon your investigational assessment-
I love the way you put that.
Reading through your summary report, which is quite good, though, is it accurate, with what I'm reading, that there is no paper records left in the administrative offices?
That's exactly right.
Based upon your investigational assessment, reading through this summary report, the access to IT systems and passwords were withheld?
Gray and Creech says no.
That's what she was talking about earlier?
Okay. Based upon your investigational assessment, you're saying that a hundred and nineteen thousand gigabytes of data is missing?
There is a decrease from, yes, January to June. Now, did the former town manager have that many personal files? I don't know. Is it, because they removed a lot. According, it took him almost a day to remove a lot of things. And, uh, this, again, is what Gray and Creech attested to in my discussions with them. But, I mean, here twelve years, did he have that much? So, again, you won't know until there's a forensic IT audit done, what was removed.
You have mentioned an IT forensic audit a few times now. What will that provide us?
It'll, they'll be able to recover the data that was, um, deleted, and then you'll have an opportunity to discern, which is town data that needs to be restored on your server, and what is, um, just personal data that belonged to the former town manager.
Ms. Woods, your report mentions that this document outlines the set, the assertions, allegations, the findings, and the recommendations. You have put in your summary, um, multiple times a violation of policy. Is that true? That, that policies were not followed?
I believe, I believe that the policy that, um, paid out accrued vacation for the one employee who did not have extenuating circumstances, I believe that is a violation of the policy as I described it. Again, there was a financial hardship when that policy was put in place, and that's when the words "extenuating circumstances" came into play back in 2013. And so, given, if you read the minutes around the 2013 change and amendment to the policy, for sure, the former town manager's payment of accrued vacation is a violation of the policy.
Okay. So...
And then, the payout of the fourteen hours to the three employees, six hours of petty leave and eight hours of personal time off is a violation of both of those policies.
And the full-time slash ha, um, part-time, that'd be an issue, too, right?
Well, I, you know, um, how that happened, you'd have to go investigate how that happened. Was it intentional? Was it just, uh, "I put everybody in at full-time accrual and so, this person just accidentally got in there at full-time accrual"? You'd have to do a deeper dive to determine if that was intentional or an accident.
And, I guess, it's a bit when there's, um, nobody around who was there at the time, right?
And the situation there was the person had accrued two hundred and some hours by twenty-three, then to twenty-three. But, because they were part-time, the limit is thirty days, and if you multiply their part-time hours times thirty, it comes to the one forty-four. So, although they had accrued more, they weren't entitled to be paid out that more, they should have rolled into sick. Then, then their increase, their accrual went up, and that may have been for longevity purposes in terms of how long they've been with the town. But, the key was, it should have rolled and it shouldn't have been paid out, because they were part-time at twelve thirty-one, they were getting accrued part-time at twelve thirty-one, and they were part-time at twelve thirty-one, times their thirty days.
And from what I understand, the place was pretty much bereft of documents. Ms. Dockery, was there any documents around for planning, uh, uh, event planning? Nothing you saw?
And I would like to clarify that it was administrative and not financial. Financial records were there, but the, it was, the administrative records were the ones.
Ms. Woods, there, this is, um, a lot of information. I still feel like I need to, to digest it after this, uh, after this meeting. However, I, I could be candid with you. From the synopsis of this report, the, um, inappropriate accruals, the payouts, and the lack of council approval and the transparency and communication that's outlined in this report, do you feel that there's potentially investment?
You won't know until you get a deeper dive. I will tell you that the feeling that, in talking to staff that are there now, no, the answer to the question is no. But, you won't know until you do a deeper dive.
Okay. Are you able to ascertain, based upon what you have seen so far, that there was, that there was collusion?
I know what I believe, but I can't prove, I, I, and I know what I can prove. I can't prove that there was collusion.
And you are recommending a deeper dive?
Yes.
Thank you.
I have three questions. Oh, were you done here?
You're done.
Does any of these findings, do any of them reflect on the previous audit?
Probably not. And, and I'm, I'm glad you asked that, Ms. Robinson, because I, I want to say this. When you get your financial statement audit, if you read the opinion, it says, "These numbers don't have any big errors in them." The numbers on these pages, the notes to the- That gives you a sense of what your financial statement audit opinion is. What it's looking for is, financial statement audits are for creditors. What is your financial health? How much debt do you have? What are your liabilities? And will we loan you money?
So, does a perfect audit-
There is no, there is no perfect audit. You can have a clean opinion, but there's no such thing as a perfect audit.
So, a perfect audit wouldn't, this doesn't reflect a perfect, there's no such thing as a perfect audit?
There's no such thing as a perfect audit. And they're looking at your numbers. Is cash fairly stated? You say you got seven million dollars worth in cash, and the auditor is attesting that you really do, plus or minus some number. Do you have this amount of receivables? Do you have these assets that belong to the town? The auditor's opinion is saying, "I've looked at their numbers and, yes, they do, plus or minus some number". And then, you get down to the bottom line in your fund balance and on your government-wide financial statements, it shows you the financial position of this town. And the auditor is saying, "Yes, this materially reflects the financial position of this town", and that is all a financial statement audit is.
It is interesting that on the bottom, at the end of all of our audits, it has said in the years past that we need more checks and balances because we're small. So, that actually kind of applies. My second question is, i- is it the, is it the finance officer's duty to know if federal taxes have to be paid on payable or if they are allowed to?
It is absolutely that person's duty. Absolutely.
And you're saying it was actually, earlier you said it was done, what, twice?
It was done right, it was done right. So, they, they, um, the, they had figured out how much accrued vacation they had, which was like twenty-six thousand dollars. So, gave him twenty-three plus and withheld thirty-six plus, let's say. And then, the gentleman came back and said, "I don't want any federal taxes withheld", so they gave him his federal taxes. So, he got his entire, let's say, twenty-seven thousand dollars in accrued paid vacation, accrued vacation. He got the whole twenty-seven thousand with no taxes withheld, but it was done in two transactions. Was the first one canceled? I thought, what I saw was that there was another deposit, direct deposit for the taxes that he wanted.
You know, I'd, I'd have to look.
I'm pretty, I, I was thinking that's the way I saw it, because they're paying direct deposit.
Yes.
So, the first time it was done right, comes back and says, "I don't want it", and so, there was another direct deposit for the difference, as I'm remembering the records that I saw. But, the bottom line was, got the whole twenty-seven thousand and absolutely your finance officer-
Sure enough, that's a no-no.
Oh, absolutely.
So, is it against the law to not?
IRS rules, I guess so. I mean, I've, it, I, I tell you, there's rules, but if the, you're not doing what IRS says, I would say that, yeah.
Okay. Um, my third question might be more for our manager. When we look at the files that are missing from the backup from January to June, obviously, the difference in there is when we decided not, decided not to renew the manager's contract. That's the importance of why we picked-
Whatever the pleasure the board is, I mean, you certainly don't have to make a decision tonight. We can talk about it, you can reconvene in another meeting. It's really whatever the pleasure the board. You have, you have the facts that they've been presented by an outside third party, and so, it's up to you as a board to decide what you're going to do.
Does it need to be in a motion or a consensus?
I think it needs to be in a motion. Whatever, whatever you want to do.
So, I, I move that Mr. Rollins be able to pursue the investigation started by Ms. Jeff Woods to continue to obtain all records that might be missing from the town and to, um, is there anything else that you, Mr. Rollins?
Do we need to discuss that?
No disrespect, Councilman Hapleton, but that's a little ambiguous, pursue the investigation. I mean, I don't have the time, unless I'm a full-time investigator.
I, I mean, you're allowed to pursue it through Ms. Woods or-
Again, that is y'all's prerogative. If you want Ms. Woods to dig deeper, then I can engage in soliciting an agreement from her, which I would need to bring back to y'all if it exceeds the current budgeted funds under auditing services. Or, if you want to use a forensic IT firm, I need to solicit bids under our current purchasing policy, so...
Would it be better, then, for you to, uh, speak with her, bring back, because I think Ms. Woods is going to try to also give us a recommendation for IT firm, uh, and to bring those things back and we just approve them next time?
I could bring it back.
I don't want to wait a month.
But, we are meeting for the, um, when is the retreat?
On the eighth.
It's still a month, I mean, almost.
Yeah.
We can plan a special called meeting to- to vote on it.
I- is there some motion that you could help me with that would help you? I mean, I hate to ask it like that.
Is there something we can put together where we give Mr. Rollins direction to work with Ms. Woods? He's allowed to do a payout per our policy of a certain number. Without going over that, at the same time, if she thinks it's going to go past that number, then she needs to bring something back to us and we'll, we'll approve that later. But, that can at least get the investigation started and help Mr. Rollins pinpoint what needs to be investigated while at the same time we're getting a potential, well, he has to do the bid for the firms that can go and do the deep dive in the phone and the, um, I T.
Now, with those bids, and Ms. Woods is about to help us out here, with getting bids for, for places, especially a service like this for a year, you want somebody really good. And, do we still have to do the, putting out bids? Are we able to go, sort of do bids, okay? So, um-
Yes, sir.
So, could we just vote on that? To go, for you to go ahead and put it out for bid?
That would be, that would be one thing you could vote on, and then you could make a recommendation that I engage Greg Isely and Associates, which is Ms. Woods' firm, to get a proposal together to look at the other side of what y'all want looked into. And, you know, give us some time to, for her firm to put together a proposal for that and give me some time to get some ideas of what we're looking at for forensic auditing firms. But, I would, the numbers I'm hearing is going to be right teeter tottering along a formal bid process, so it's going to take some time to engage the forensic auditor, because we have to follow North Carolina purchasing laws.
Ms. Hapleton, I think, I think I know where you're coming from and the intent that you're, that you're trying to do. If I may, I, I think maybe the direction that we need to give to Mr. Rollins is to, uh, to keep, continue this deeper dive and this investigational assessment to include the IT forensic audit. Is that, is that general enough to get to what we need?
I think, let me, let me see if I can take a stab at it this way and stop me if it's wrong, is it? So, I moved that, uh, town manager Charles Rollins, put out for bid for the IT forensic audits and to engage, uh, the firm of Greg Isely and Associates to get a proposal put together to continue their investigation that Ms. Woods has already started. Would that be sufficient?
Yes, sir.
Do we need to put out for a bid though?
You absolutely have to put the forensic stuff out for bid.
So we can't stay with the company until we do a bid?
No, sir. You have to absolutely, I have to put it, I have to advertise it, put it out for bid, solicit bid. Because it's going to be over the $30,000 more than likely mark, which is the market, the line in the sand, if you will, when it comes to purchasing law for the state of North Carolina. It's not an informal bidding process, it goes to a formal one.
Okay. Mason, did you get that? There's my motion.
Do we have a motion? You have a second.
I'll second it.
Have a motion and second, further discussion.
Could you repeat your motion?
Yeah, repeat it, please.
I moved that town manager Charles Rollins put out for bid for an IT forensic audit as well as engage Greg Isely and Associates to get a proposal put together to continue the investigation that Ms. Woods started.
I'm just going to say the firm name is GWI.
GWI.
Tax and Accounting.
Can we be that descriptive and be?
He's not naming who, someone from the three bids. He's saying for them to help with the process, I think is what you're saying, right?
Yeah, for her to continue what she started.
You've got two different things here, Councilor, there with me. You've got a motion that says for me to put out for bid and bring back to you the results and the recommended vendor for forensic accounting. The other part of that motion, as I understand it, is that you're directing me to engage with GWI to put forth a proposal to look at everything outside of the computer records.
Yes, that's what I understand.
And to bring back a proposal from them if it exceeds our current budgeted. We have a bucket of money for auditing services. We're using simple terms here. And we're nowhere near exhausted after the year. Thanks to Ms. Luther's work, our audit was way less, the cost of it was way less than, than was projected to be in this year's budget. So there's some leftover funds. As long as I don't exceed those funds, I can engage them to have them take a deeper dive, if that's your direction.
That's what, that's my direction. I think that's what, what helped you.
You'll do without listening to us. And your attorney concurred with that motion.
Thank you for the assist.
Yes, sir.
Further discussion on the motion and the second.
Mason, are you good?
Mr. Rollins, you know, since we're just seeing this, if, if all of these things included here financially are added up, what's, what would be the total of these errors, mistakes?
Mr. Mayor, I, I have no idea. I mean, I would say less than $50,000.
Yeah.
For the, for the vacation and payments and.
Ms. Luther, how much would you say it is in total?
Disregarding?
Of what we've heard here tonight?
Yeah, disregarding the federal taxes. I know the one payout was like $4,000. So if you take the others into account, max a 10. Then that's disregarding the federal taxes because I did not look at how much he had elected in his W-4 or anything.
So in total, it's $10,000?
Yes, in terms of the vacation, so forth, and the payouts related to the vacation.
But he's asking total, right?
Yeah.
Well, like I said, I, I can't even speak to the federal taxes because I didn't look at the employees' W-4.
Well, outside the taxes on that, it's 10,000 or less?
Yes, based, based on the items identified here, yes.
And these are all, this is 10,000 from a relatively small period of time, is that right?
Yes.
Well, it seems like it's a period of time from after the town manager notified his contract wasn't going to be continued until the time, that time he left. That's what it seems like to me, but. So during this investigation, were, was the town manager ever contacted and asked about these things?
Let me state this. I put in the report that it was a preliminary work. And I had from last week till now, I have documentation to support everything that's in my report, but I have not talked to, there was no time yet.
Okay, so he was not called, contacted.
But you know that some of these things have been brought up and have had the opportunity.
That's a yes or no answer, and the answer is yes. I have not.
Was the finance director contacted about any of these payouts? Does it have a simple explanation exist?
I don't know if the.
I'm not sure how simple against it when you violate a policy.
From a personnel perspective?
I moved that Ms. Woods be allowed to finish her.
Sure.
I was just going to say, from a violation of a policy, I, I don't know how much of an accident that can be.
From the violation of what?
Of your policies.
And your personnel policy.
So, so then you would say there's nothing in a personnel policy that would prohibit a town from having someone come and make a presentation, making all the indications and accusations that we've made here tonight? You don't think that violates a personnel policy?
You misunderstood what I said. And where I'm, what I'm trying to tell you is that particularly the first three items is in violation of a policy. And I don't know where an accident can happen to violate a policy. That's what I was getting to. But have I spoken to any of these departed employees? No, to answer your simple question.
Okay. So I guess we're indicating no one knows who the previous town manager is or the previous finance director was?
I think you all know who they are, but I was not about to put their names in public document.
Okay. Any further discussion?
Yeah, I have a question. I mean, you knew about a lot of these things. Did you reach out to them and ask about it?
I don't think it's appropriate to be speaking of this, which is why I haven't been speaking to them. But it sounds like there'd be plenty of time before we speak with them. So I'll be happy to answer that in future. Any other discussion?
I asked, he asked her, did she speak?
This is the discussion.
Yes, I asked her.
It's supportive.
He asked her, did she speak to the former employees? And so I asked him because he knew about many of these topics.
I did not, I did not.
Discuss any of these things?
No, I did not do an investigation.
I didn't ask, did you investigate? I said, have you talked to them? Because maybe you can give us a, an easy answer of how this was just an accident.
Yeah, I could, but I don't think it's appropriate. I don't think it's appropriate here at this time to do that.
But it's all public knowledge. It's public record. Why can't we know?
Because this could be moving toward a court case.
We've been asking you about some of these things for months. And, and we know you've had contact with them. And you have never brought to us any answers to any of these things. So you have had the opportunity to clear out these.
I've never been tasked with providing you answers to any.
Not tasked, we've talked about it to you.
Yeah, you've talked about it. You've talked about all this.
So if you thought there was an easy answer of, hey, why don't we just ask them? You've had that opportunity. You have their phone numbers.
These things, these specific things, no.
Yes, you have.
I have not.
We've talked about those brown boxes and files that are missing. Yes, we have.
I've heard you all talking about it.
And you have their phone numbers and you could have reached out.
And you have their phone number.
No, we don't. I don't have any. I don't, no. You think he gave us his new phone number?
You don't have the previous finance, you don't have the previous employees?
I deleted all of them from my phone immediately.
Okay, so you did have them, you deleted.
Mayor Sessoms, during your time with town.
Look, this is not an investigation of me.
It's a discussion.
Why you were there?
And this is not a discussion. It's a discussion of your motion.
Well, you could have asked, you could have asked your questions about the investigation during the questioning time.
I didn't ask her anything. I asked Mr. Rollins a question.
Okay, but you're asking your questions now, but now we can't discuss your questions.
I asked him.
But you did, and you didn't do it during the discussion time.
She stood up and approached the microphone.
Okay.
So Mayor Sessoms, you asked her about communications that she may have had with him. And I think as the mayor, for a little bit of transparency, we just want to know a few things from you. I mean, if we're going to get ready to make this motion to do more investigation, if you're saying it's a little premature, by all means, you know, pipe up a little bit. So you were there a lot during the final days.
If you understood what I'm saying, it sounds like I piped up enough.
Is it possible that Mayor Proton, if he may take the gavel and moderate while we, do you have the discussion? Because since you're engaging in discussion.
No, it's not.
Okay.
You have to do that for a role.
No, I do not.
Yes, you do. It's your purple book.
How much time did you spend with Mr. Wood on the last day?
I stayed until the end, until he left.
Until he left.
Do you know what he was deleting?
I came downstairs and told y'all what he was moving. And you know that.
Did you?
I, I will not sit here and be interrogated. I will not.
Well, you could clear things up for everybody right now. There's nothing, nothing, there's nothing wrong. This is a perfect opportunity for us to talk to you about these things.
No.
Because a lot of people have been curious about it.
I'll speak to the record when there is a record. And if there's a big one.
So if you wouldn't mind telling us, it seems like there is some claims that a lot of documents are missing at town hall. Did you notice documents missing at town hall?
Wait a minute, that's you. This is not right.
I'm not answering this question.
This is a legal issue. You're drilling this guy like a big fork. You're taking him to court. You need an attorney.
It's not a court.
I would stop it if I were you. I really would. I'd stop it.
Thanks, sir.
This is not right.
Hey, folks, thank you, thank you. We have a motion on the table. Is there any further discussion on the motion? If not, I'll call a question.
I have this one thing.
Well, the discussion that we're talking about is, the motion that I made was for investigation. From what I understand from Mayor Sessoms, that may be premature. So every time we try to ask questions about it though, you say, "We can't discuss it." From what I recall, I think at one point in a discussion with Janelle, and Janelle didn't come right or wrong, but I think that you said that you had spoken with an attorney and that you didn't even need to come to the meetings anymore. So I'm getting concerned that you're not taking part in this. If there's things that you do not know or know as a mayor who owes a duty to the town, we would like to have that discussion.
Okay, for right now, we're the ones that are going to have to make the vote. Do we want the investigation to go? And it's on the five of us. So we need to make that motion and make that vote. And then we'll move forward and all that will come to the surface.
Like I said, if Mayor Sessoms wants to say anything that would stop us from doing that, I'm open to hearing it.
Okay. I do have one question. So your motion is going to have part A, part B, kind of like Mr. Rollins said. And we're square on that, Mason?
Yeah.
All right. And you second it, so.
Could you repeat the motion?
No.
No? Can the clerk repeat the motion?
Yes, Mr. Clark, could you please repeat the motion?
Well, I got the first part of the motion, which is to put out a bid for audit for IT forensic to get a proposal together to continue the investigation proposed by Mrs. Woods.
Who? Second half was that he would work with Ms. Woods.
GWI.
Investigation within the funding available.
They would take a deeper dive and use the funding as available, that is available, currently available.
Any other questions about the motion?
I'm just, I will vote, I'm, I'm going to vote for it. And I'm hoping that all this is for naught, that we're wasting money looking at this, that everything's above board. So I, I'm hopeful, so that's.
All right, we'll call a question. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the motion carries unanimously. Item 11B, discussion of potentially purchasing a town radar sign, or signs, plural.
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor. So Councilor Hamilton and, Councilor Hamilton asking to put this on the budget. I've had a citizen who has reached out to me, is concerned about speeding on Strawberry Road. I think he's talked to several people on the council. He's talked to our county commissioner, he's talked to the sheriff's department. And he's just not satisfied with the responses he's getting. His solution is, is the town buy radar sign, one of those solar panel ones, then put up on Strawberry Road to hopefully stop speeders. So he was asked that, run this before the board. I can tell you that the cost of these are going to be anywhere from $5,000 to $10,000, depending on the model that was selected, if it's your pleasure and you do decide to buy one. And would, however, it gives you something to think about as your manager. Somebody's got to maintain it, somebody's got to move it around. And we don't have a whole lot of staff time to be moving that around. And I'm not sure that it doesn't take a certified law enforcement officer to calibrate it and make sure it works right. So that, that's the issue before you. And I would add that DOT did do a study in the area of Strawberry Road that this gentleman was concerned about. And they found that the speed limit there was the right speed limit for that part of Strawberry Road.
Did that study tell us if people are mostly following that speed limit or are not following that speed limit?
I did not see the, the study, Ms. Robinson. I was just told by DOT that it was the appropriate speed for that part of the, it, you. This is an enforcement issue. We don't have a police department. We're not the sheriff's department, we're not the highway patrol. I mean, my personal recommendation is, we need to kick this back to the sheriff's department. But it's y'all's pleasure, as with everything, if you want to get authorized to do a budget amendment out of the fund balance, which is our savings account, buy a radar sign and I'll do what you tell me to. But just consider, somebody's got to keep it and take care of it and they require additional funds to do that.
I actually saw one of them sitting here at 150 a mile an hour, but it wasn't even operating. So I'm not sure. It was operating one day and the next day I drove by and I can believe it wasn't, wasn't working.
Mr. Rollins, is it really 150 and not strawberry? And it's the one between Strawberry Road and the vineyards, kind of in a curve?
I thought it was strawberry, but I may be wrong.
Yeah, strawberry.
You know, I think it's 150.
Yeah, it's between Strawberry, it's between the strawberry side and the 220 side, all on 150.
Yeah, but it's, it's past that.
Yeah, you're right.
Yeah. So with that said, I don't think this is really our jurisdiction. I think that this is law enforcement and I think it's DOT. We start dipping our hands in there and we're just going to mess. We, I don't want to deal with that.
Further discussion?
Well, Mr. Rollins, would you, you know, I had spoken with the, the county sheriff's office. They actually said they would increase their presence around there. This is back in around the June or July, I think, when, when that citizen reached out to us. And they actually did increase their presence for a little while. And they're, and I started seeing the signs up more in there. So if, if we're not going to do any sort of sign, maybe at some point you can just continue to encourage them to be around here if we see a drop in it or maybe communicate with that citizen.
Absolutely. I have a contact with sheriff's department. I can express concerns. We can't guarantee they're going to be there. I mean, they, they have to prioritize enforcement. But I can actually let them know your wishes that they control that area.
Because with that traffic study, they did say that they recommended an improvement in traffic monitoring enforcement there. So they said everything was posted, you know, in a good spot. But, you know, I think there were, had it written down at one point, that there were maybe give or take around 15 accidents over a short period of time. So I, I get his, I get his concern and also get the concern that, you know, we don't want to take over law enforcement. But, but yeah, so as long as you can continue to talk with him and see if we can come up with something that they start.
Yes, sir.
Further discussion?
So are you good?
Yes, ma'am.
Item 11C, consideration of unified communications telephone system, for Rollins.
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor and Board. So in your packet, you have consideration for a new telephone system. Now, I am keenly aware that this town recently, I think in the last two years or less, purchased a new telephone contract with ATCOM. So one of the things the finance officer and I have been diligent about doing is, bills come across, there's a lot of them come through my email, either finance officers. We're scrutinizing every contract. And what I've found is, the current contract vendor is overcharging us and we're not getting what we could be getting. So what you have before you is a proposal for a contract that gives better features for less money. And one of the things that really kind of tips over this is, the current contract, as you well know, we're using the Gordon House now as an office for parks and recreation. They need a telephone down there for the Parks and Rec director. And the proposal from ATCOM to add one telephone, it's right here in writing, it's like $6,000. That's ridiculous. That's not good governance. And so I'm recommending that we.
Is it golden?
I'm not sure it has to be black. But I'm recommending we terminate this contract and go with the other company. And that includes that extra phone, and a new phone for them is less than $200. So that's my recommendation. And I'll take questions on that.
So I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
So I learned about the pre-audit stamp that when I had to sign checks and that must be on everything. Was there a pre-audit stamp on that contract?
No, ma'am. Don't count on a general statute, I'm glad you're aware of that. Says, states that every contract that the town or any county engages in, whether it's an ever local agreement or a contract for service, must have a pre-audit stamp that the finance officer is pre-audited, that the funds have been allocated by this board. I haven't found a pre-audit stamp on any contract that I've come across yet from the old administration.
So it's basically void anyway.
It is void. That means this contract is not enforceable by a no count on a general statute. And that's no count on a general statute 15928.
So does that mean we need it?
My, our new finance officer, not my finance officer, is pre-auditing and there is a stamp on everything because the mayor pretends, "What is this?" Okay. So we are following the general statutes, but prior contracts do not have the pre-audit stamp. So therefore, it's, it's, it's a loophole lawyers to get out of contracts. So we won't be overcharged and we can get out of the contract. They won't be happy about it, but.
So it's easy just to pick out a kind of thing, we're done.
Well, we would give them a written letter. That would be the proper thing to do.
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Rollins, what is the current system cost that we, that we are paying today? So we have a cost comparison between the new, the proposed and the current?
The current system has cost us $4,063.98. However, when I called them to investigate this contract, they informed me that that would go up an average of seven and a half percent per year due to licensing. Our system is, the current system is a Mitel system. And Mitel charges for their software every year and they pass that through this third-party vendor, middleman, if you will, to us. So we can, it's, right now it's $4,063. It will be seven and a half percent more on average every year. In fact, the salesperson told me, there have been years it's gone up 20%. With the proposal in front of you, it's a guaranteed three-year contract with no increases at all, unless we add additional services or funds. And I'd also point out that if we stay with this, we're still going to need that fund for Parks and Rec. So you're adding another $6,000.
So if the current is 4,063 roughly, what's the new?
Well, it would be this 6,000 plus whatever the, the additional licensing is for this particular phone. Let's see if I can tell here. User license is 186 bucks and a mailbox license of 55. So it'd be a couple of hundred dollars more just to add this annually besides the first initial upfront cost of this contract.
He's still talking about the old contract though. I think you're asking how much is it going to be on the new contract?
Which new contract?
What is the cost of it?
Yeah, annual. If it's 293.46, that times that by 12.
About $3,600 a year. About thirty-six hundred dollars a year.
Okay, so there is a cost saving. The first year, the fifteen hundred dollar initial expense, and the next two were savings?
That's, that's the installation cost of the new system.
And this includes already that additional phone you're referencing?
Yes, sir.
And what kind of additional services are we expected to get for this?
Well, one of the great things about this system, there's two things that, that really will help the staff is, number one, when the public calls and leaves a voicemail, it will send an email to that particular, say, the planning director, and it will transcribe that email, so he can read that email. It's a transcription of the voicemail that was left. The second thing is, is it gives us soft phone service on our laptops, which all the new staff has, and on our phones, so we can return phone calls to people that appears that we're still in the office. So, we don't have to buy cellphones, they don't have to use their personal cellphones, their personal numbers, and then be exposed, so it appear they're sitting in their office. So, those are just a couple of the features. And it's very scalable, too, for just the cost of another phone, which is about two hundred dollars a phone, if we were to need one.
Are there other municipalities or references that you can share that, that they're using this company?
Well, this company, Telco, actually is a local government provider. They, I'm familiar with probably ten different local governments down in the southeastern part of the state. That's why I reached out to them for a proposal to look at apples to apples against the contract. And no, I don't have any ownership in them, or any stock.
Is, do we need to flip this out to dip?
Uh, no, sir, no.
Any concern with, with ceasing the agreement, the contract you have with the phone repair system?
It's technically not an enforceable contract by local general statutes. So, I would coordinate, if it's y'all's pleasure to approve the new contract, I would coordinate with the new company to come in and install funds, and I would notify these people that we're canceling their contract.
Is there a clause that if there are issues or services not rendered, issues that we can get out of this thirty-six month agreement?
Yes, sir.
No good question.
Any further discussion? Or would someone like to make a motion?
I'll make the motion that we move forward with the Volcey's contract that Mr. Rollins has described, and we cease utilization of our current system.
I'll second.
Ms. Rollins, this motion needs to include anything giving you the approval to cancel. If they were, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Item 11D, application for youth sports grant.
All right, I'm a little lighter now. So, myself, city manager, doing some research, we came across a grant. Do you guys have electronic copies of this? Have you seen it? Okay, in there, youth sports grant. It's, it's a rolling application process. It offers twenty-five thousand dollars to host a travel event. In there, I went up, came up with some dates, I think June twen, twentieth to the twenty-second. I don't know if any of you guys have ever been to Myrtle Beach or the shipyard, when they do their gigantic ballpark events down there. My thought would be to host a softball event. We do a lot of baseball here, we don't really do softball. It would encourage to bring young ladies in here to play softball. I would, my, my thought would be with your guys' approval to apply for it if I were to get it. I have my numbers in there, and I know that the max is up to twenty-five thousand. In there, my total expenses go over that. But what I don't have listed in there is that all these travel events, you charge a hundred dollar entry fee, right, per team. My goal is to try to get thirty teams, there's three thousand dollars. You also charge twenty-five dollars per player to come into competitions. I add that up, that's twenty-two fifty, and then you charge the entry fee, which is currently held at all tournaments, right? They show up as ten dollars per adult, if you break down simple math, two adults per kid, I came up with about seven thousand two hundred dollars in entry fees. With that said, I'm actually at twelve thousand four hundred and fifty, which covers my deficit. I don't believe there'd be any law.
Still softball tournament that's regional, I'm looking at Virginia. This is a new event or recurring?
No, 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 this would be new. The town of Summerfield, to my knowledge, has never held an in-house event. The prior Parks and Rec director, he's stuck with the theory of contracting out, or I guess letting outside agencies, USSA, Top Gun, Perfect Game come in and host tournaments. This would be the first one, to my knowledge, in the ten years I was involved with Summerfield Rec, that we would be actually putting on one of our own.
And if we proceed with trying to get this twenty-five thousand grand, when will we know if we got awarded?
I, I read through the packet, also read everything online. They don't really give a timeframe. Everything they keep referring to says if, if you need the money in advance, please let them know sooner than later, so that they can pre-schedule to get you money. But nowhere does it give a deadline on when they're gonna let you know.
And if you are not awarded the full amount, or maybe you're awarded partial amount, what's your plan?
I'll be honest with you, probably just to turn it down. I already have, I have, USSA has already reached out and said that they would love to have that weekend. They're planning on holding one of the big, what they call national conferences. They're asking to use that weekend. My revenue projection would put us twice what we're gonna make on rentment, but I have a backup plan for, for written forecast that weekend if I don't, if I don't.
If you don't get the full amount?
Correct.
And we, and your estimation, I think I heard you say, the difference between twenty-five K and the thirty-three that you're projecting, that you would recoup that in the sales?
Correct, I would recoup it in the registration for the teams, for the entry fees of the players. And then if, well, I would hold a skills competition on that Friday night. Generally speaking, Myrtle Beach, I think they charge twenty-five dollars per player for the skills competition. That's to cover awards and offset expenses. Typically, you have officials come out there, and they're actually scoring the players as they do it, so that you got an independent judge. But all that together puts me significantly, I think it's actually three thousand seven hundred thirty-one dollars on a quick estimate, and that's only counting two people coming in per player. And I know me and my family, we went to Myrtle Beach, I paid five entry fees every single day, and it cost me like three hundred dollars. So, I anticipate, I'm very conservative with that guess.
Is there a timeframe that, that you are thinking about of when you may not pursue this if you do not get the award? Because this is June twentieth, so we're, geez, we're in January.
Well, with your guys' approval, I'd like to send it this week.
And if you do not get awarded or notification, is there a timeframe where you're saying this, and I'm not gonna pursue this, I'm gonna go this route?
I have not set a timeframe. If I had to give you one, I'd say by March fifteenth would be my cutoff, because by March fifteenth, I need to let USSA know that they can have that weekend.
Last question, and thank you, Councilor, for giving me the, the mic, so to speak. And Coon, thank you for going through this and putting it together. How, how does this benefit our citizens in Summerfield?
Um, I, I think initially it draws a positive light to Summerfield, to bringing the community. Like SRA, they have four teams in softball alone. But so does Greensboro Batting Center, prolific houses a lot. It draw, in my opinion, the best answer I give is it draws a positive light to the Summerfield area, the community. People would come in and stay in hotels, obviously we don't have any, but there'd be staying in hotels in Greensboro. They would have to eat lunch at, like, Subway in Rio, which are our businesses. I think it would just, it would put a positive spin on some of what we've experienced over the last year.
Sort of puts a light back on, a positive light, like, to, you know?
It would.
That we're doing, we're doing something good.
Yeah.
And local kids get to be in a tournament that they don't have to travel for, that's here at home.
I go to Shipyard twice a year, almost every year, which is a great place. And I go to Myrtle Beach, every year my daughter gets picked to play All-Stars. And it's, it puts a positive light on everything, everything in all those locations.
Any other discussion? Someone like to make a motion?
I make a motion that we give the authorization to proceed on with the grant.
And I'll second.
Have a motion to second, further discussion? Call a question, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. You may just stay, hang out there. Item E, consideration for performing an in-house maintenance department.
So, we're gonna, we're gonna tag team it all here, Mr. Mayor and Council. So, we have a PowerPoint presentation here behind you. I think most of the council got a tour in the last two weeks of our facilities, and this is a snapshot of what's going on and what we recommend. I do wanna speak first about Mr. Coon. Not only is he a sports nut enthusiast, but he has a skill set that, he's a licensed home inspector. See, he has a skill set for maintenance, and has been very, very instrumental in saving the town money. We cleared this parking lot yesterday on a tractor, and the other parking lots, that was done without having to hire that out. So, he brings a skill set to the town. So, keep that in mind as we look at this proposal. So, next slide, please, Jeff. So, currently, these are emergent repairs that Coon has identified, and they're locations all over town, here, are town properties. It's about sixteen thousand dollars with us doing it in-house. So, between Coon's knowledge and Rich's and Scott's, we're able to address these and keep this cost down. This is absorbed in the current budget. These are high-risk things that they're addressing immediately. So, we just wanna let y'all know about those things. Next slide, Jeff. So, current repairs, we'll go slow here, this is about four pages. This is not all it, but this is the, on the left side of that column, the blue, it says location, the estimates. This is the cost estimate, if we were to have to hire outside contractors to come in and do all of these things. And the red is contractor required. You'll see very little red, the rest of it, we feel like we could do it house with Mr. Coon and his staff, and the additional staff that we're asking for in this proposal. So, next slide, please, Jeff. So, there's four pages here, and, and this is, like I said, not all exhaustive. I know one thing that's not on there is the steps out here behind this building, the steps behind Town Hall are peeling paint. They need to be pressure washed and repainted before they go to rusting, and we have to spend even more money on them. So, next slide, please, Jeff. So, you can see there's a lot of money right there that would cost us outside contractors. And that's kinda, kinda been our way to address, the town's way to address our maintenance needs across town, is to hire a contractor. We did very little in-house. So, we're trying to change that philosophy, to do it in-house, and you'll see some cost savings here in a minute. Next slide, please, Jeff. And I think some of y'all saw some of Mr. Coon and his staff's handiwork down at the Gordon House. It was just sitting dormant, and we turned that into an actual office. It's been repainted for a couple of hundred dollars in paint and some grease and elbows and stuff. So, next slide, please. So, these are annual tasks and assignments that a proposed maintenance department would be able to handle in-house, year over year. And then there's the stuff that just comes up every day. Say that y'all decided you didn't like this paint color in this council chamber here. We could get it painted in-house, we would not have to hire a paint contractor. If you'd had to hire a paint contractor in here, you'd probably be looking at probably three to five thousand dollars. It's about two fifty a square foot for a painter. So, these are the things, year over year. For instance, I'll call your attention to the third item up there, grounds, the mulch addition, the playgrounds. We spent fifteen thousand five hundred dollars having a contractor bring us mulch and put it out in our playgrounds last year. Our estimate is, if this proposal was approved by y'all, we'll be able to do that for about twenty-five hundred dollars a year, just the cost of the mulch. And we have to re-mulch a lot of things. So, next slide. So, currently, we have three positions. We have the Director of Parks and Recreation, that's, that's Coon. Part-time grounds worker, that's Scott. And then the maintenance technician, which is Rich. Rich and Scott were the ones working before Coon was hired and was starting to do all the wonderful work here at the park, and some of the deferred maintenance and stuff. Next slide, please. So, here's what we're requesting. Go ahead, next, Jeff. So, first of all, where's the money gonna come from? What we found is, is through research, is that the past administration was not charging the proper fees for the athletic field. Y'all have a fee schedule that you approve every year in your annual budget. They were not following that fee schedule, that's a direction from y'all. We were only bringing in somewhere between ten and twenty thousand dollars in fees for the Summerfield Athletic Park. I'm just gonna talk about the athletic part for a minute. So, you can see that second line, the projected this year, and Coon already has it reserved in a waiting list for just about every weekend. And I may even back these numbers down, it actually came in at the mid-one forties, but we're projecting a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars that the Summerfield Athletic Park will bring in this season from March until November, is that right? Okay?
Yeah.
And that's conservative. That does not include the blue down there, the multipurpose fields, the baseball fields for Revolution, private rentals, community center rentals, press box rentals, concession stand, and the sheltered house, sheltered houses and amphitheater, and this can, this building also is on it. So, that's not even counting that. So, that's even more revenue if you look at that. Our current expenses over last year actually came in at two hundred and ten thousand dollars. These have been triple-checked by finance officer, and again, we're being conservative here. We feel like these current expenses can be handled in-house by our staff if this proposal's approved. That'll save a hundred and eighty-nine thousand. So, total, you got a bucket of money of three hundred and fourteen thousand. So, remember that number if you will. Next slide, please. So, what we're asking for is basically three full-time positions. Currently, we pay ninety thousand dollars a year to cut grass. Ninety thousand dollars a year in contracts. That contract we can get, we can get out of, because it was not pre-audited, and in fact, it hasn't been renewed in approximately ten years. So, two, two of those positions are grounds workers, they'd be working full-time. And you say, "Well, what are they gonna do when they don't cut grass?" That's when we're gonna catch up on a lot of this maintenance. So, in the winter months, we would have these employees cross-trained and working on projects that Coon sets priorities on. And then the maintenance person would be more like a handyman. We have repairs that need to be done to our fishing pier, piers, actually, out here, and other woodworking projects here, and other projects across town. The mayor called me yesterday about a bridge off of Strawberry Road that was damaged for a tree falling over it. I reported it, the planning director and I did yesterday. I got an email today that we may, may be responsible for part of that repair, because it's supposed to be there for lights, so on and so forth. So, those four positions also would be in, in this proposal. We already do those every year, but just for transparency. So, we're really asking for three full-time positions and continue to funding those part-time. Did I say that right, Coon?
Yes, yeah, you were accurate.
So, next slide?
Can I ask?
Just a minute, go back to the.
Clarify that there's four part-time positions, that's something we've done in the past. We've had.
We've had seasonal workers.
We've had six.
We, we've had seasonal workers, just a minute.
I think you would argue that the last, since June, I was your seasonal worker. Myself and SRA staff came up, and then ultimately billed the city, and our tournaments on weekend function. So, unofficially, you had 'em, they were just SRA, myself, and then the people I could recruit, Dustin Barnett, my son, et cetera, to come up here and actually work the fields. Otherwise, the tournaments would have fell apart.
But prior to this past summer, did we have?
I can't speak for fact, I can only speak from what I heard, is that the prior director of Parks and Recreation had nephews that came up, and they prepped the fields on the weekends.
In the, in the past, about eight years ago, I was working here part-time. So, I worked all the tournaments, weekends, and everything, so. I think it's been a span.
Okay.
So, in order to start a maintenance department, there's a certain amount of equipment that we need. This is a list, kind of a breakdown of equipment that would be needed to, basically, if you wanna say, get in the business of maintenance. And so, this is some of it, and then there's one more, next page. One of the things that we're really excited about, that's gonna cut down on overtime, is to put at least one auto gate at the front of SAP if this proposal's approved. And that will allow us to allow the teams to get in there early and be able to close it up through electronics and Wi-Fi and those types of things. Call attention to the third line down there, a new vehicle, there would be a new vehicle needed. That's actually on your capital improvement plan for 2025. That's actually on your capital improvement plan for 2025. And yes, it's needed. You know, in the proposal on the last page, there's a trailer in there and we would be hauling rock down to the dog park. We can hire a contractor. It's going to cost a whole lot more. We can do it in-house. So you need a bigger truck to haul mulch, to haul dirt, to haul equipment, to haul rock, so on and so forth. So and that is state contract. That same truck, I have one, so I can speak authority of that. That's an eighty-five thousand dollar truck. That's state contract pricing right there for 2025 for a month. So that equipment need to get started would be a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. Again, the question asked, where are you going to get that from? We have currently, in our current twenty-four, twenty-five budget, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars in a line item for the Summerfield Community Park, SCP, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Not sure what that was budgeted for. What I do know is we can, with y'all's authorization, we can buy the equipment we need and we can do all the repairs that we need to do down here and fix all those fishing piers and stuff in-house and a lot of these other things. So that's where the money for the equipment would come from. Next slide. Oh, okay. So the cost, the total cost with fringes, again, it's been checked by the finance officer and I, is two hundred and fifty thousand, four hundred and fifty dollars, I believe, for the employees we're asking for. You saw that number, three fourteen, so if you minus that, you're looking at a positive flow of sixty-four thousand dollars. So that's the proposal. Will we entertain questions, anything? And I think most of you have seen the maintenance needs. We took you around intentionally so you could see it with your own eyes. It wasn't conceptual. There's a long list of stuff that needs to be done and it's a continual thing. We're continuing. And I'll call your attention to that within two years, we're going to have the A and Y Trail, we're going to have Bandera, we're going to have a water tank and we've got to maintain that. So every time we take on a new project, we need to be cognitive as a team, meaning the board and the management, that we're going to have to maintain that some way. And this, and we'll be staffed up to do that. So, questions?
So what's the ask?
The ask is to authorize us to hire those three current positions and part-timers when he needs them when the season starts and authorize us to do a budget amendment for that equipment, which is, well, what was that number?
So go from SCP to a new category?
We put it in new line item.
Yes.
Equipment one seventy-five. The equipment, you asked what the number was, it was one seventy-five.
One seventy-five.
So we do not have existing contracts for mowing and maintenance?
We do, but they're not valid. One, they haven't been renewed. They expired and two, they don't have pre-audited.
Don't have that, but you're accumulating that. Can you keep a record of it so we can see? And again, record of it so we can see? And again, show the citizens what the savings is?
Yes. I can tell you out of that hundred and eighty-nine thousand, ninety thousand of that is a mowing contract or a mowing service that's mowing.
Right.
And so actually, that's almost two full-time people right there. And then we, but the benefit of this is, is that you have winter months where you don't have to cut grass. And so they can be doing other things. They can be doing all these maintenance things. We got a lot of painting, you know, we got a lot of pressure washing. If you look at the new sign, and not the new sign, but the sign out at Athletic Park, it hasn't been pressure washed in years. You can barely read it. I mean, we need to take care of what we got. And it's like a car. If we don't, if you don't maintain a car, it's going to break down, it's going to cost us more later. And it's just not what the citizens deserve, in my opinion.
How much mowing is there? Does Mr. Doggett takes care of some property he bales hay for?
He takes care of a part that he does and that is about, I don't know, twenty acres?
Twenty acres.
Eight acres, okay.
Do we have some more you want to know? Is that something we need to check in our investigation?
Well, that would be up to them to ask for a price. I mean, that, that, actually, the staff was being a good steward. I'm not going to go, I'm not going to go to you as a contractor and say, hey, you need to be charging us more money. If I'm the town manager, I'm going to get the best I can for the people. So I wouldn't put that off as a negative light on the past.
I thought it went up, but it, there just wasn't a contract for it. Wasn't there somewhere the prices had increased and you had record that the prices had increased? There was just not a new contract made for it?
That's why I asked that.
I wasn't aware of that.
Yeah.
The field maintenance.
In your presentation, you listed a abundant amount of repairs. Is that a normal amount of maintenance?
It's a little hard for me to answer. I mean, I look at stuff and Coon's looked at stuff and there's stuff that hasn't been done in years. And I don't know, I, I'll, I'm not trying to throw anybody under the bus here, but you remember the day that I came here for my in-person interview? I walked out on that porch and I asked you, Councilor Clay, I said, when was the last time this place was pressure washed? This is our community center. This is y'all's council checker. That's not what I expect and what I would demand out of staff.
And it looked great. I couldn't help but smile the whole time getting a tour. I don't know if you guys will ever let the community see it, I'm sure.
I made note in your presentation that, correct me if I'm wrong, that you said that we were not charging for the rental fees of the recreational park correctly and they were not, we were not filing instructions by council? Can you elaborate? Why, why did we not do that?
So I'll give you a turn, but let me give you the general statute of things. So every year in the budget, y'all set a fee schedule for different services of the town. That's normal in every town. In my last town, if you wanted a scoop of dirt, we'd been doing it for twenty years. We'd bring you a scoop of dirt for X amount of money. So there's a fee schedule. That fee schedule needs to reflect at least what it cost us to do it. Otherwise, I don't think we should be going backwards in, in most cases. That fee schedule was not being adhered to according to council's direction. So when we should have been bringing in over a hundred thousand dollars a year at this SAP, we were bringing in less than twenty because we weren't charging the people using it.
That's all right. I was contacted several times where things, things, I, I think there was a lack of willingness to reach out and ask for help. And so the way to do that was to reach out to the renters, to our customers, and ask them to chip in and help. And me being a prime example, one of them was dragging and striping the fields for rec games that occurred Monday through Friday. There was not enough manpower to do it. There was not enough time in the day to do it with the amount of repairs that needed to happen and the other tasks that needed to occur. Therefore, contact was made with me. I make, I contacted one of my guys. SRA now pays. We sent a guy up there. He has access to the equipment for the town. He drags the fields, he lines the fields, and then it's deducted off my total bill at the end. So the amount of revenue, you see on the revenue line, is significantly lower, but it's because that lack of willingness to reach out and ask for help caused all these organizations that are using our property to come in and chip in, even with the field stripe for this prior fall. We don't have the ability, we don't have the ability or the time for somebody to go out there and line a soccer field. So therefore, Stokes United Football League, they make an offer to say, hey, we'll come in, you let us rent the field and we're going to go ahead and we're going to be the striping it for you. We need that to happen because there's other organizations that are also using the field. It, it worked out to where, okay, he's now utterly renting it free, but he's also providing just twenty-three dollars a gallon of paint to come out there every two weeks and then stripe the field. It was a lot of gentleman's agreement in order to get a task accomplished, whereas my goal is organizations for help, but provide a professional service to them. I want them to come out here, I want them to pay the rental fee, but I want them to walk away and say, wow, this park is nice and we didn't have to put in labor to do it. By the manpower and the equipment I need, I can provide that service to the community.
And do you think with that difference in fee, asking for a higher fee now, less bartering, those hopes will be agreeable?
Great question. So I went ahead and I reached out to, to some of our customers we've already dealt with. Summerfield Rec Association, number one. I also reached out to USSA, Tanya. I spoke with Carter, Catley. He's in, what's he got, Top Gun right now. Mary's running Top Gun softball. I spoke with all them. I explained what I would like to see happen. I'm not going out to hammer anybody. I'm going out to try to save the customers we currently have. It's easier to retain customers than find new ones. So I'm going out and I'm saying, here's what, here's what I'm shooting for, as long as council agrees with me. Here's what I'm shooting for is to come out, look at our total number, charge them a seventy-five percent this year. Twenty twenty-four is, or twenty twenty-five, sorry, seventy-five percent of the total value is what I expect you to pay. I'm going to bill you quarterly to make sure that we're staying on top of payments. When we get to twenty twenty-six, my goal is to hit you at a hundred percent. Hundred percent of what the council had previously said. Let's get them to where they're supposed to be. When we get to twenty twenty-seven, we need to raise rates. I've done a little bit of looking into it. For example, High Point, they currently charge a hundred and twenty-five dollars a game. We're charging eighty. We're losing fifty dollars right off the get-go. I had the athletic director, and I won't mention the name, but he told me, you're neglected from my home inspection experience, mechanical instrument, you're looking at ten, you're neglected from my home inspection experience, mechanical instrument, you're looking at ten years lifespan, right? I got broken sinks over there. They're ten years old. That's what happens. Stuff breaks. Without the funny, without the money to fix it, I'm sitting here, you know, going, well, I don't have the money, I don't have the people, so we're back to contracting out vendors. You know, I'm calling a company to come in and change a receptacle. They charge twelve hundred dollars and we have numbers to actually back that up to change a receptacle, change hundreds of receptacles. But you know, the, currently, we're setting on just, just lifespan of equipment, we're setting on almost every external bathroom that we own has no heater in. I have a space heater. Myself and Rich has installed space heaters to keep water lines from freezing. These sub-freezing temperatures, one water line goes, we're going to have massive repairs. But every, every heater's broke. Not one functions. I'm not going to say not one. There are a few that do produce heat, but the majority of them do not function. But again, it's lifespan. It's just the lifespan of them wore out. They're ready to be replaced.
Also want to mention to the council that we would be canceling our main service, custodial service. I think it's about eight hundred dollars a month they get charged. They're charged us, which is about ten thousand dollars a year. And literally, you can ask anybody here from Town Hall staff, they're not in Town Hall two hours. We would absorb that with our own staff and he would rotate among the staff. You would need to, we would, part of your motion would be to allow us to charge seventy-five percent, to amend those fees, seventy-five percent for the rental facilities out there.
All rental facilities or just the athletic park?
Just the athletic park.
So basically with a barter situation, there, that's what their fees come down to, the seventy-five percent number?
From previously?
Mm-hmm.
Oh, no.
It's a lot lower than that?
Oh, significantly. Where?
So, excuse me, so what you're saying is based on them doing all the bartering and the field services, then what they're paying, they were paying was actually a lot lower, you know, than the seventy-five percent. So that, from here to the seventy-five cent, or seventy-five percent is a big step and then you're taking them to another?
Now, we were having this discussion, we're going to have to run somebody over there every day at least to dump trash cans, check on things, clean the bathrooms and that kind of stuff. But utilization gets up and they're using more and we, you know, we don't know until we know the utilization. It's sort of like that second bathroom that we cut out. We're going to wait till utilization. If we do, I think it would be a part-time position, a seasonal position, because I don't think people are going to use it year-round nearly as much. But we, we think right now that we can absorb Bandera, but until we know the actual utilization, I'm not going to stand here and lie to you.
Have you factored in, because you're acquiring more equipment and now there's more maintenance or calibration or whatever you do, have you factored that into your analysis?
Everything's going to be brand-new. So that's going to be something that we're going to have to put some money in maintenance. We'll be asking for in future years, but everything's going to be brand-new to our equipment.
Have you considered a combination plan where you have maybe not quite as many, three, you asked for three full-time employees?
Yes.
Maybe one and a half and have some type of combination of additional contractual service?
The numbers don't wash. I mean, with one and a half people, that's not even enough to do the mowing. But if you, if you watch our mowers, they got two people here mowing all the time when they're just doing the mowing. And that's going to take those people out, you know, the whole mowing season. We all know what the mowing season is here. That maintenance guy is going to be basically working by himself and one part-timer doing maintenance.
That was kind of something I always think, is there any way to start out with one or two full-time positions and one to three seasonal part-time? See how things go this summer and then if we need to add somebody, add somebody, be it full-time or additional part-time, but graduate into it?
I kind of almost think the opposite. Like, let's get some people in, let's get this stuff done. Like, we have so many needs right now that I want to get people, let's get it done. Like, if we start with one person, I mean, that's just going to take so much longer.
If we start with two full-time?
But if they're telling us they need three for this, then I, my opinion is give them what they're asking for. We have the money for it. It's going to cover itself. If this is what they, they feel like they need three people to do this, let's not start them off understaffed.
I, I, I hear what you're saying and I know Councilor Doggett is, maybe you're making a motion, but this is a really huge decision with a really big investment.
We are limited to government.
We are. It would be, to me, it'd be beneficial for, for us to have a little bit of time to digest this and talk with you, maybe both of you individually or together, and sort of understand this a bit more, really look at your, at your cost analysis that you have presented. But and there's quite a bit of ask that you add, whether they're three full-time employees. So that motion, what we're going to do is we'll be, we talked about pricing, we'll be talking about the full-time employees, the amendment. It'd be, I think it'd be beneficial to.
To put this off for another?
Put this off for at least one more?
Would this create a problem for you?
I'm very intrigued. I'm very, very, I'm not, I'll say no.
But I feel like we had the time to meet with them. We already went and did the tours. We met with them about the numbers. If you had questions and you need to think about it?
I have. Only thing I've seen is a beautiful Gordon House that did an amazing job. I haven't, this is the first time I've actually seen the numbers.
Yeah, that sounds really, I mean, it sounds good. I'm kind of a Keith, I just haven't had a lot of time to, to think it through. I mean, everything about it sounds good, right? That's why I just want to know is?
We're kind of, I want to answer your question about can we wait another month? We're kind of under the deadline. We got to hire some people to get the park up to speed and we're running out of time. The first tournament is when.
So soccer had tryouts last week for one team. School will start here right around that second, third week of February. I've already started purchasing stuff to fix things. Now, without manpower, I mean, I'll fix what I can fix before they start. Some of them things on that one slide you showed you, we've already had significant injuries, we've had fractured legs, we've had orbital sockets crushed. Some of those things, I mean, they have to be addressed or rightfully so. I'm going to have to shut the field down. I can't knowingly at SRA, I mean, I know the girl fractured her leg, I know it for a fact. It's, it's on the town, the hole in the mat, it's your guys' property. Rightfully so, I'm not going to open that field until that issue's fixed. But the time crunch is coming quick. Soccer will start in February. The fields are already rented, schools begin, they have tryouts and they start games. Baseball will begin that first Monday in May and they'll hit it running. I still got a dugout over there with a hole in the top. I got a bathroom sink that doesn't function, the handle's ripped off.
I mean, do you think you'll even be able to find people to fill those roles in that short amount of time?
Great question.
I asked him that when I had my?
That's going, you did. And that is going to be, I guess, on my challenge. I've had some people that I do know, some from SRA, prior police department employees that have reached out saying that they're ready to make a change in their life and they are looking for, for a move. I know they're qualified. I was recruitment officer at USC G my last year there. My job was to go out and find young people who want to be the police. It's a task that you would be putting back on me. It's a task that you would be putting back on me. Um, if we crunch it and we kick it back, I, I've explained to Twig, my schedule will change. I'll be working two to 10, because somebody's gotta open and close those gates every night. And we have players up there every night of the week. Um, so the, the time is ticking, um, before this season begins.
So, yes, you're right.
And we're gonna hire contractors to do stuff instead of using our own staff, which is gonna end up costing us more money in the long run.
So, like Council Hamilton said, it could take time to get staff. So regardless of this gets approved or not, you need to have a backup plan.
Well, I think, to my knowledge, current backup plan is, I guess, we keep rolling the way we're going. Uh, would be to keep paying $90,000 for lawn, keep paying $800 or $700 a month to have housekeeping come in for an hour, two hours. Uh, fix what I can fix as I go until I exhaust my budget, uh, on making repairs, and then make logical decisions to not open stuff for safety concerns.
And you, you could, and, and you're back to the gentleman's agreement on renting the fields then?
Yeah, ideally, I'm back to that gentleman's agreement. I'll be calling SRA and seeing if they'll chip in to go up there and help strip and line fields, drag fields, use our equipment. That's gonna be my only option, is to resort back to the way we did it before, or literally don't open fields.
Correct me for a moment. That may still occur, because it may take time to get the staff.
But you said you got some folks that are lined up?
I have some folks that are already lining up. They're interested. I got one young man. He's in college. He wants to be one of my, I call them weekend warriors. He wants to be one of the guys to come in and help on the weekends to prep for tournaments. I got three or four. I've already, I've already tried to start stacking, um, just in preparation. Hiring people does take time.
I, I'm not opposed. I'm just letting everyone know I'm not opposed to this. But this is a huge decision, which you're putting on us in a very short amount of time. And you're, now you're saying you're putting stressors and pressure that I gotta have an answer now. And that doesn't suit well with me. I would like the opportunity to have conversations and talk through this.
I understand.
Um, and, and make sure that we are allocating and using the taxpayers' money appropriately.
I understand.
We have to advertise those jobs.
Um, I have a question. Um, Tim, what do you think of this?
Right, it's a very good presentation, very thorough. Appreciate the presentation very much.
Thank you.
But what do you think of this idea? Are you, do you, are you for it, against it? What do you?
Well, it sounds like cost savings, you know, but, uh, buying new equipment creates new maintenance. Hiring employees, even though it's, it might be a savings on the front end. Employees get increases everywhere. So, you know, it's, it's putting something in motion that continues to grow. But, you know, you have to ask yourselves a question. Where are we at as a town? And what is it time for? So, this could be the time for that.
Do you feel like it is?
I, I mean, I don't know. I haven't, I haven't dug into the numbers. I haven't. It's a good presentation. Very good, very thorough. And it's exciting. It's exciting to think about, uh, you know, um, the sign out front of the athletic park getting press washed. I thought about going over there and press wash. Danny, do you have?
Yeah, I just wanna state, you already have that one person in the budget, because you had the three, um,
Right.
Other than the director, you had the three. So you already have that one person in the budget to go ahead and hire. So that's a, that's a given.
So it's basically two more full-time positions plus those four seasonal?
Oh, the four seasonal, we already had two. And there was already money budgeted, is that right?
So we had the director, and then we had three part-timers. One was more like a ongoing part-timer, what you're saying, two were seasonal?
Yeah.
Yeah. So you still have that, that other additional person?
I'm just gonna throw it out there. I don't see this gigs. I'd like to make a motion to authorize King to hire three full-time people. And seasonal, part-time, four part-time. Do a budget amendment for $175,000. And continue, uh, this year renting the fields at 75% and increasing the field rental to 100% next year.
Correct.
I'll second it.
I have a motion. Have second. Further discussion.
I kinda like, he, it sounds like a great idea. I'm tempted to, to jump out here on it, um, but I know you, you said you're under time constraints. I suppose if we do it, like Mayor Sessom says, it could, you know, it continues to have things on the back end as it grows, right? How hard would it be to switch back from that to, from switch from that back to what we have now if it doesn't work out that way?
It's just a matter, y'all taking actions, everyone's involved in the department. But, you know, to, to Councilman Clay's and the mayor's point, yes, there's ongoing costs such as maintenance and stuff, but remember, we're getting ready to raise rates 25% the next year. We didn't come to you and ask for you the whole $314,000. We're asking for 250 of the 314. So there's already a net positive there. And, you know, we'll raise rates in '27. We're not anywhere near our peers when our rates should be out there. We're not charging anything near that. So that's gonna cover ongoing costs for some time unless we get crazy and don't, you know, try to spend every, we're not asking for every penny of savings. We're asking for a portion of it. So I would just ask y'all to consider that in, in deliberations.
But on the rates though, what you're proposing is a 25% cut.
No.
But it'll be an increase from last year. Only because they weren't following policy.
Yeah.
If they don't do this, then he's back to the gentleman's agreement and they're not gonna do it again. Then he's not gonna be able to go forward to raise the rates and keep the, but now that we, now that we know we can't, we can't continue inappropriate or bad behavior, we have to correct that.
Well, yeah, but then we're given, like he said, you're giving out, running out of places, um, unprofessional.
Not just a bar.
Not a bar, so.
I, I hear what you're saying, Commissioner Clay. You know, we should be charging 100%, but we're not. What we're saying is to ease into this and approve the people. When we go to that big raise in '27, we're doing a stair step. That's what we're doing.
And I completely understand that, and I, and I don't disagree with it, but what's on the books today is a fee that we're not popping.
Again, but that's, that's, no disrespect, that's not me or my current administration's fault. That's the past administration. We're trying to right the wrongs, and we're trying to stair-step it to help.
So it could be as simple as making a motion to say, listen, we're going to knock the 25% down until a year, two years, or whatever it's gonna be.
I think that's why the Council of Doggett's.
You said that?
Yeah.
So I'm sorry.
So I have a question. The, um, when you said the three positions, that includes the one that we already have in the budget? So there would not be four full-time positions? See what I'm saying?
Correct that.
Dan, help us out, yeah.
The one in the budget was a part-time, it was like a seasonal. So if you're wanting three full-time, I would just clarify. I would, what the best practice would be to clarify what you want the new department to be, how many numbers. That would be the best.
And that's what I did, right?
That's how I understood it.
And then we'll amend the budget as needed to fix what we want.
Yes.
I also think that for the sake of our charter, and while I know we're limited services, I think it offers, it's another service that we're offering to the citizens, and it makes us less on the paper town.
I agree.
I agree with that. I also think it's good. It keeps kids busy.
Jonathan, what are your thoughts?
I, I'm leaning towards it. I mean, I, just like you, it's like, it's a big decision. It's the last second, right? We just kinda got into this. So it always makes me wanna pull back, but if they're gonna do it, I mean, I'm leaning towards it.
Further discussion?
Uh, let me encourage you and give you some, uh, some, some counsel and advice. Next time that you bring in such a huge project to us, I highly recommend that you reach out to us independently. Talk to us, go through those numbers, make sure that you vet those questions to us. This is a, just a huge, huge, um, uh, investment that we're putting into. Again, the presentation was, was, was good. I understand it. There's a lot of questions. We were just asking just today, and even more questions. We're probably not even thinking about, or should be asking, so.
Yeah, that's what I feel too, and I feel like it's, so I feel like we should do it. I just know that there's things that should be asked too.
I, I disagree with that, and I feel like they did come to us. We had the opportunity to go drive the properties, go see everything. I asked all these money questions. I already asked all these questions, and about the number of employees and all these things. And I feel like we had time to ask these questions ahead of time. I do not feel blindsided by this at all.
Blind sighted.
Okay. I, I feel like I had the proper amount of time to think.
Mr. King actually reached out to me, uh, I think, you know, I, we were unable to meet up because it was over the weekend with bad weather. So I, I appreciate it. I, I think they brought this to us as fast as they sort of assembled it. So I understand that. But, but Heath is right, you know, if we could have a little more notice in the future about stuff, but I understand now that, you know, you, your time on this too. You just got in here. You've been working hard trying to make things better. So that's what it looks like to me.
Appreciate you.
Never discuss it, please.
Any further discussion? Here now, we'll call a question. All those in favor of Mr. Doggett's motion, uh, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries unanimously.
Hey, thank you for all your hard work. It really does look a bit, it, our hesitation, was it, that we, you know?
Everybody's got a job.
It's a big, it's a big change, right?
Everyone has a job.
Everybody's got a job, yeah. Go get hired, sir. I appreciate you guys.
Does that put us above?
Item 11F, update on Senate Bill 382, downside view.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and folks on the council. Uh, so, uh, the town manager has asked me to give you just a brief presentation of the potential implications of Senate Bill 382, which was passed by the state legislature as part of the, uh, aid package at the very last second, uh, that went to western North Carolina. There was no discussion that was, uh, taken part with the North Carolina League of Municipalities in advance of this bill. Uh, there was no discussion with the, uh, American Planning Association, North Carolina Chapter Legislative Committee. Uh, and ultimately, we were left with this huge omnibus change to, uh, the general statutes related to planning and development and rezoning without any answers or explanations. So, with that said, the bill basically has stated that any local government-initiated rezonings or tax amendments. So if we were to, or you, were to say we have this industrial quarter we wanna establish, we got an industrial park. I'm not saying that's gonna happen, but it, just as an example, probably a bad one. Uh, but if you initiated this amendment, then any change that occurs as a result of that potential rezoning would then have to be signed off by every single property owner that could potentially be impacted negatively by that initiated rezoning. The same thing applies with text amendments, and this is the kicker. So if there's a text amendment that's done, and it impacts anybody to the point where it decreases permitted density of development. So let's say you allowed two units per acre, and you do a text amendment that says, well, now you're only allowed one unit per acre. Every single person in the entire town would have to agree to that, for that text amendment to be legal under this bill. Just to let you know what the ramifications of this bill are. Additionally, any change to decrease the range of permitted uses. So if you were to amend your business district to say, well, we don't want, uh, bars to be in the business district anymore. Every single person who's zoned business in the town would then have to agree to that, uh, for that to be legally validated. Additionally, you cannot create any sort of non-conformity on land that's not in a residential zoning district. So that would be any, any non-conformity. So use the law, a non-conforming structure, non-conforming sign, and anything that would create a non-conformity by a, by an action of this government agency would then have to be agreed upon by those owners, uh, prior to being enforceable. Now, this is not to say that somebody could not come in and request a rezoning. They can. The simple action of applying for the rezoning, in my personal and professional opinion, is then giving us authorization that they agree to the potential ramifications of that rezoning. If they come with a conditional zoning, they have to agree under state statute to all of the conditions imposed in writing. So that is the written authorization of agreement that they agree to any conditions of the rezoning. So I think we're covered there. The questions are coming with ordinance updates and, uh, even comprehensive land updates. And then any government-initiated rezoning. So those are the questions we're trying to flesh out right now. Um, I'm keeping an eye on the legislative committee's reports, keeping an eye on the League of Municipalities reports. Um, and basically, we just don't know. We don't have any case law on this yet. It's so new. Uh, we have very little guidance. Uh, school of government has basically said, the way it's written, it's like the nuclear option, basically. So for now, we just have to kinda tread carefully when we make these decisions. So, um, I will kinda give you guidance in any staff reports that you find on, um, how this bill might affect your decision one way or another, to, so that we avoid some of these things. There are some potential options as well. It, it's said, it's, well, it, it's basically rumored that the legislature may revisit this particular bill. Our hope is that it will, that they will engage the APA and get our input, as well as the school of government's input on some of these things, so that we can kind of narrow the scope of this law and what it might do. Uh, if that does not happen, uh, one of the other potential, uh, solutions could be that the town could, uh, basically request a, uh, exemption through the state legislature. Um, and that would typically involve, uh, the council approaching their local representative or senator and asking for a, um, um, special legislation, basically, to be exempt from some or all of the, um, standards in the ordinance that were passed. Um, and then I would just encourage you to be vocal with your local congresspeople. Let them know that you have concerns about, uh, the broad impacts of this bill. Not necessarily the fact that, you know, it, it's decreasing government overreach. That's fine. You know, that, they, they pass bills all the time where they might whittle away certain zoning exemptions if, you know, North Carolina is very much a private property rights state, and we want to continue to be a private property rights state, but with controls. Cause, you know, we do wanna allow people to do as much as we can allow them on their property, but within limits. We have to protect the people who are around them. So, uh, this can make that a little bit more difficult. Some cases, a lot more difficult, so. So if you have the air of you local representatives, just, just mention some of the concerns that you might have. And if, and if you feel it's prudent to do so, you could ask for that special legislation, um, to be put under consideration. I don't know. Mr. Rollins, has anything to add to that?
I would just say, we'll keep you abreast since we know more. Um, this is a very serious issue. Justin and I have talked about it at length with our claim. We think that, we're praying that the legislature will say, oh, we overstepped our bounds here too much. What I would say to council is, the second thing is, if I call you and I need a letter, we're probably gonna have to have a special meeting to get a letter saying you're not in support of this. So just, uh, please be flexible that I can at least get three of you together to, to do that. Certainly, we'll talk to everybody. But it's a very fluid situation, and we just don't have a lot of answers, but I felt like it was important enough for Justin to come and do a presentation. If we know more, we'll, we'll do an update next month at the next meeting.
And if I find things out in the meantime, I'll be happy to add them to my weekly update, just to keep you abreast, so you don't have to wait a whole month to find out what's going on.
So it looks like Cooper vetoed it, huh?
He did, he did veto it. Um, and then it was overridden as part of the last legislative, uh, action. But it was tied in with a very important bill, so nobody was gonna vote against it.
Oh, we know about that.
Exactly. As your, as your well-wares, a very similar situation might have happened here.
So it says, like, it's retroactive. They could go back at least six months. Would this affect the de-indexation?
Uh, that was done by state action, so I do not believe it would apply to a state action. I know. Great question.
Very much applies to, like, public comments tonight, like with the quadplexes and the text amendments. It totally applies to us.
And, and I'll discuss partially some of that in the next item.
Thank you, Mr. Rollins, for having him come out. It, uh, it really helped, and you've been very thorough. I appreciate that. Based upon, since you've been here a very short amount of time, but you're looking at our, our ordinances, um, our amendments, do you, where do you see, based upon the current ask of rezoning or potential growth, where do you see this impacting some of it?
So I think the largest impacts, uh, are going to be, well, there, there's gonna be impacts looking forward for sure. If the will of the council is to amend its comprehensive plan and its unified development ordinance, then we will have to carefully vet every single change, uh, that comes through to make sure that we don't run afoul of this. So we have to tread very lightly as we navigate the waters going forward. Not to say that we can't start that process, if it's the will of the council, because if we start the process and then they do draw back on this text amendment, then we're further ahead than where we'd be if we just sat there and waited. So we don't necessarily have to take action on anything, but we should be working towards a potential solution at some point. And I, I really think if we don't hear anything probably within the next month or so, it would be very prudent to ask for an exemption.
You said if we update a comprehensive plan?
I did, yes.
So based upon your knowledge and experience, are we due for a, a, uh, public involvement, updated comprehensive plan?
Most definitely. So the existing plan in place, uh, is from 2010. There was an attempt to redo it in 2010. There was an attempt to redo it in 2021, I believe it was. My understanding was that plan was not well received and does not align with the current political climate. And so the state statute does mandate that we keep a reasonably up-to-date, they don't define reasonably, but it's been interpreted everywhere I've ever been that that's typically a 10-year cycle. So reasonably up-to-date comprehensive plan to enable us to continue to do zoning and land use. And so we're at basically 15 years. And in 15 years, I would wager that you have seen some things change in Summerfield that were not anticipated in that plan in 2010. And those are the types of things that we want to try to capture as well as what could potentially happen in the next 20 years, knowing that Mr. Couch's properties have now been deannexed and will be developed, knowing that sewer is going to run, not necessarily into Summerfield, but potentially adjacent to Summerfield. So we have to be cognizant of these things. We have to plan for these things, and that is the purpose of doing these comprehensive plan updates every 10 years, because things are just changing so rapidly. I've seen people do them every five. I think Greensboro does them every five, just because their growth is so out of control right now. But it's one of the tools that we use as planners, not only to try to manage growth, that is a big part of it, but it also helps us inform our rezonings and things we do in current planning. And so as an adopted plan, we're able to then say, we point to these adopted plans and say, "Well, yes, it's consistent with that adopted plan. This is what the town people had worked on. These are all the public meetings we held, so we know this is a priority for the town. We know we want to park somewhere in this town. We've identified this site in our, our comprehensive plan, and this is what we want to gear our grant funding towards. We know that we've got too much traffic coming down 220 here, just as an example. So we know that we want to ask the MPO for additional funding so that we get these projects done when the next STIP cycle comes through." So one thing builds on another, which builds on another, which builds on another, which is why this plan is so essential. And that segues to what Mr. Mayor might say would be, I don't, I believe, 11G, but I'll let him take care of that.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Very, very important. Any other discussion on items? Well, while you're here, why don't we do one?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So as I mentioned, there's a great segue from Councilman Clay's comment and questions about why we need a comprehensive plan. Do we need a comprehensive plan update? And my professional answer is, yes, we do. In addition, we have significant challenges in our current unified development ordinance, and typically, when the comprehensive plan is updated, you also want to update your unified development ordinance to align with that plan. So you do the comprehensive plan, and at the same time, you're also anticipating the updates that you need to your unified development ordinance. But we've got a couple of issues. So we don't have a good future land use map to work off of right now, so we're kind of running blindly on these rezonings. So any consistency statements that we're adopting as part of a rezoning action, we're having to point just to policies objectives in the plan, but it's really hard for us as staff to give guidance because we don't have a functioning future land use plan to go off of to say, "This area was identified for professional office, this, this area was identified for commercial growth." So we have to just basically point to general policies objectives rather than that more specific future land use map. So that's a huge part of the ask that we're looking for with this potential contract within Focus Planning, is to work with us as in-house staff, but also to have their expertise and their additional staffing abilities to be able to do that background research, to help us coordinate these public meetings, because the main goal of these plans is public input. We want transparency. We want public participation. We want to hear every side of the issue, and then we bring those to the council and let the council decide ultimately, what are your final priorities that you want to look for, and we include those in our plan. And so the contract that was written, we are looking to do both the comprehensive plan update and the unified developments update within a year. And so, but this contract, of course, could be changed, modified, depending on the needs of the council and the town and how things work out with San Vito 382. But we should definitely get the process started. The good news is, we have the money already in the planning budget, so we do not need to authorize additional money. What we do need is for you to authorize the contract and authorize the amendment from capital services to planning services. And so all the money is there. It's been allocated in the budget. So from that standpoint, I think we're more than good, but I'll let Mr. Rollins.
I just want to be transparent. There's $90,000 in this year's budget. The project is, is quoted at $114,000, so I want the council to understand that if you, it's your pleasure to move forward with this particular project, we will be needing $24,000 more next year to make it hold. So I just want to be transparent with those numbers.
Next year, so that we have a new budget?
Twenty-five, twenty-six. We have $90,000 in the current budget through July. We probably won't use it all. What we would ask as staff is, we'll roll what we don't use out of that $90,000 next year, but we're gonna need $24,000 more to a total of 114 to do the whole project. But in Focus Planning, said with Justin and us, they can get it done in 12 months.
12 months.
And we're out of compliance.
Agreed.
So I just want to make sure that there's, there's a legal side to this. If we get challenged, we're out of compliance. So it'll be a very busy 12 months, but we can get it done between in Focus and, and Justin.
And, and if I could, I'm looking at our budget right now. We have the $90,000 expressly for the comprehensive plan update that's already in here, but we also have a line item for planning ser, or, uh, planning services. And we've only used about 50 of the 80,000. So what I was asking was to amend the budget to move that unused funding from that line item to go with the comprehensive plan.
You want me to add?
So we wouldn't need additional funding in future years unless project costs, for some reason, ran over. But if, if that's your pleasure, if that's what the, the town manager is, is accepting of.
It's a great idea. We, I just want to, want y'all to understand, we probably, the way the contract's written, it's like $7,000 some change a month. You, you, y'all are all very smart people. You divide 114 by 12 months, that would be our payment. We wouldn't use it all between now and July. What we'd be asking is that unused portion, we could roll to next year to pay for the project.
Thank you.
So this contract is not 16 months, it would be 12 months?
12 months, correct.
And I don't see land use plan in here as a component.
That was my question.
That's a great question.
Again?
So the land use plan is a component of the comprehensive plan. So that's important to understand. They, they are part of the same document. A comprehensive plan includes land use plan, includes your background information, your demographics, it's gonna include your environmental component, it's gonna include your policies, your objectives. All those are different components of the comprehensive plan. And I actually just went through this process with Guilford County, and, and I will also tell you that this would be a bargain. $250,000 was the quote just for the unified development ordinance when I worked with City of Grand, and $100,000 for the comp plan. So that was $350,000 combined, and this is $114,000 combined, using both my knowledge, Mr. Rollins, and then in Focus staff. And so...
And you feel confident within Focus?
I do. I've worked with the potential person that will be working with us, Michael Harvey. He used to be with Orange County, very knowledgeable, and I worked in Hillsborough, so we worked very closely together for years, and so I have full confidence in his abilities. And I also had them add in our contract that it would be a person of mutual choice between. So if in Focus tries to assign somebody, we have to agree to the person that they assign to us. That way, we can make sure that it's somebody that we would be comfortable with to be able to do this job.
Which is process, are you running like a steering committee again, like, the first time?
I, I anticipate probably our, our planning board being the steering committee, but we are open to suggestions. We can kind of get that process running once, i- if this, if this is approved, you know, then the, the goal would be to meet with Michael, sit down, come up with a game plan, come up with a calendar, basically, and then at that point, we'll decide if we want to do steering committee of the planning board, or if we want to, you know, expand it out, or if we want to just do public members. We can, there's all kinds of ways we can go. We want to make sure that we have somebody who's got planning expertise, probably different components of, of, like, transportation, some other things. And then we will hold public meetings throughout the year, basically, to give updates, to get input on the plan, and then we'll do regular reports to the council as well with, with those updates, so.
On, on the meetings, then, there is no requirement with meetings? Is, how, how are the meetings going to be determined? How many, how many are we gonna be?
So the contract would authorize up to 16, I believe, if I recall reading that correctly, but that's up to 16. I don't imagine we're gonna get up to 16. I think usually we will do, usually quarterly updates, so we'll try to hit major benchmarks. So we'll try to set up the outline of the plan, that'll be the first, you know, quarterly meeting, and then we'll get the meat of the plan kind of drawn up, you know, in the, the second. And then the third, usually you're trying to finalize everything, kind of nailing it down, getting the formatting right, and then the fourth one is usually adoption. So that, that's more how I, I see the schedule. And, and going with the ordinance, I know there was discussion about how it's out of compliance, and that is correct. It is not 160D compliant. It is also not Reed versus Gilbert compliant. Reed versus Gilbert was a Supreme Court action on signage that was done back in 2018, I believe, 2019. And so being out of compliance with those sets the town up for potential liability for, you know, litigation. So we want to be careful to avoid that. We want to try to get the ordinance into compliance. So it's just a best practice to, to update these things regularly as well.
Earlier, there was a question during public comments about 2018 application to amend the comprehensive plan. Do you know anything about that?
I know, it's fair.
Would you, would you mind looking into that?
Absolutely.
I see. Thank you.
And I believe Dana was gonna try to fill me in. She may, she may have some knowledge about that, so we'll, we'll make sure that we...
Maybe let us know what it is next time if we get something we need to...
Can I ask a hypothetical question?
Sure.
If we move forward with comprehensive plan update, and I believe the question was asked, or the statement was made that they had made a comprehensive plan amendment request, since that plan would be updated, would we then be authorized to refund them the money that they had paid if we find record of it?
So, quick synopsis, a fee schedule was put out with the budget years ago that included the option for a comp plan amendment. They paid the fee for the comp plan amendment, and it came back, the town manager responded with that was an error in the fee schedule and that there was no such vehicle for a comp plan amendment. So they attempted to refund the fees. The individuals that put the application in said, "No, it was a line item. It was an authorized fee by the council. We want it." So they denied the check. What should have happened is either they should have been paid back, or the funds should not have been taken into revenue, they should have been turned over, stated to the state, because if you have a check that has not cleared the bank...
For five years.
It gets, it gets stated. Instead...
How much was it?
1,500?
1,500.
Unfortunately, my analysis has shown that the check was just voided. By avoiding the check, then that, those funds were in revenue, and so the town has actually recorded revenue for $1,500 that they never should have recorded, because they never performed the services for that revenue. So there actually should be a $1,500 payable on the books for that, potentially whatever the resolution becomes. But it was incorrectly, and based on my research so far, incorrectly taken into revenue.
Okay, so there really wasn't supposed to be a spot that even to exist, really?
That's what the town manager claimed, I think, was that it should not have been on the fee schedule, and there was no such vehicle for the town, and so he denied the claim for, the application for an amendment.
Here it comes again. I guess we'll have to look into it.
So I did, I do, I did find, because I knew that was outstanding all these years, so I did dig through some paperwork, and I do have the paperwork for that, and that was on our, it's in our pile of things to get discussed and resolved.
Got you.
But it was gonna be a much longer conversation.
Right.
And so, yeah, we, we had the audit and everything to get through, and that, that's on the list.
So we'll, by the time I'll send it into...
I think it's, I think you're right.
This gentleman was never introduced. I don't know, are you at the town or in Focus?
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm Justin. I'm the, the planning director for the town.
For the town?
Yes, ma'am. Sorry.
Don't mention any of that.
I apologize. I should have introduced myself. I am Justin Snyder, planning director for the town. My first day was December 9th, so it's a pleasure to meet you.
That's our day, we should.
Good, good, good presentation. I think we're left with mitigating risk and doing something that we're required to do.
Yes. Statutorily required to do it, as well as just a best practice for public participation, transparency, all the things that we want to do in this town. So the ask is to accept the contract as written and authorize the budget amendment to reallocate the funds within the planning budget.
But we can't accept a contract as written because it's in, it's not correct. It's a 16-month?
I have the 12-month one.
Oh, you just didn't make it the all packets.
Okay. So I have the 12-month in hand.
Accept the 12-month contract as written. Forget...
So it's the same thing, it was just for 12 months?
Yes, sir. We shortened the time period.
And so with this, we would have a lot, you'd have the ability to have a lot of public participation?
That is deep.
No, this contract has no public participation in it, none. And I never heard anything about why this is so legally required.
Mr. Mayor?
Whoa.
The answer to your question, Councilman, is yes, there will be significant public participation, to the point where the public has the ability to come. We will advertise, we will hold it in likely this room or other places around the community that are public buildings. We will answer questions. Mr. Harvey will be there to help answer questions as well, and then, you know, we will be putting out on the website each of these benchmarks drafts that come out, and we'll be keeping the public abreast of everything that's going on.
And there's no requirement that the UDO, as we go, changes significantly. It may very well be with public participation that the UDO ends up being similar to what it is now, right?
It, it could potentially be...
Satisfied.
Yeah, we, well, that's the comprehensive plan, the comprehensive plan. Unified development ordinance.
Excuse me, the comprehensive?
Yeah, so the comprehensive plan, it, it will change to a point, but it doesn't mean we're gonna just completely reverse gears and go backwards the other direction. It's, it's ultimately gonna be, what do the citizens want? Does the council agree with the direction that they've been given, the, the charge of the public? And if not, the council ultimately holds the decision on what goes in that document. So, so there will be a, a significant amount of input.
I'd like to add two things. One is, I would encourage the council to be as many of these public meetings as you can, even though it's not official council meeting. The other thing is, we would be doing online surveys too with QR codes for people. So we're gonna give them every opportunity to have public input. Now, whether they choose to do it, you know, that's gonna be up to them, but I think y'all being in attendance at these benchmark meetings is gonna be almost imperative, so you can hear from the people in here, so, because ultimately, the decision's gonna fall on you when this plan comes before you.
And this won't be finished this year, right, as I understand?
It, it will take 12 months, so it'd be 2026, probably March of 2026 is probably a target date by the time we get rolling.
Is it asking anything more than accepting the 12-month contract as written?
Not currently. Uh, the budget amendment.
The budget amendment to allow us to move the money around?
Reallocate the funds that are in the existing planning budget.
The funds are there.
They're there.
We're moving for this year, it's just, just moving on.
That's correct.
I'll make a motion that we accept the 12-month contract as written and authorize the budget amendment to reallocate the funds within the planning budget.
The motion, we have second. Second. Have a motion in second. Further discussion.
Given that you said 160D was the statute...
Correct.
And that, I do remember there being language of being, you know, reasonably, that, that being in there, and this has been greater than 15 years? Is that right?
We're at 15 years now.
15 years.
And 10 years is generally considered to be... And ten years is generally considered to be reasonably up to date.
All right, and there's no, and there's no requirement that we're going to say we're changing course of how things started, and we want to continue?
Nope.
This is really taking the pulse of the community-
That is correct.
At this time, to have accurate reflection.
Absolutely, and we're going to be looking in that crystal ball about twenty years into the future, and we're going to do the best we can to try to anticipate surrounding growth, as well as growth within the community, and determine what the best course of action will be moving forward.
So those people who are concerned about us reviewing this would have every opportunity to go to these public meetings and to voice their opinion and get their folks to consider-
It's highly encouraged. Additionally, let me just say, it does not change anybody's property designation, it doesn't, doesn't do anything other than guide our land use decisions moving forward. So there's nothing that's going to happen to anybody's property unless officials rezoning action comes through.
And just starting this process, nobody's approving anything-
That is correct.
As far as, because we're just approving, hey, put something, start putting something together-
That's right.
To reflect the community, and then make it eventually evaluate it, right?
Yes, sir.
Can I have one ask on the, when you notice for the meetings, is that whatever that little clause is, you have to say that there's a potential for over a quorum to be here, or a quorum to be here?
The notice of quorum will go out with every, every public meeting, because it's anticipated that at least three of you could show up, so we want to make sure we-
We just-
Cover our boundaries as well.
Anything further? We'll call a question. All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
As opposed, the motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Adam Aye. Consideration, Mr. Greg Fox is an alternate for the planning board, Mr. Ben.
Yes, John, Councilman Doggett, and I met with Mr. Fox, and so I would like to make a motion to appoint Mr. Greg Fox as an alternate for the planning board for a two-year term ending in July 2027.
Second? Have a motion in second. Further discussion?
I just want to say, I think Greg would make a good addition. He's been here his whole life, his family. I don't know how long y'all have been here, but your dad was a dentist when he started out here.
You don't have to tell your age.
I've been here two years.
I just think he'd be a good addition.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries unanimously. Thank you for your patience and time, Mr. Fox. Adam J. Discussion of Council Review of Potential Board Committee Candidates.
And speaking of reviewing folks for committees, I'm actually interested in that, but I didn't really see when the terms are up. When do those terms come up for the only committee? Like, John, you're on there now.
We got voted in at the last election.
Right, but I didn't see when that's required to come up.
The next, the next election cycle is where the general is.
So, shall we maybe set that so that there actually is a period of time? Because I know you're saying it's the next election cycle, but I didn't really see it that specifically saying that's how it was done.
I don't know that it says it anywhere. It's like when I was put on PTRC, I think it, we just do it at the election.
We did, yeah, so we do it like every two years.
But do we want that right, is what he's saying?
Yeah, it'd be nice to have, I mean, I remember when it came up last time, I said I'd be happy to be an alternate. Mr. Doggett, has everybody that's wanted to be on board, I think I heard that there might be some folks, and that's why this is your chance to correct me from wrong, that maybe somebody didn't want to interview you? Is, are you able to interview everybody that wants to be interviewed?
I have interviewed everybody but one that personally attacked me on Facebook, on social media, so I recused myself, told them that she could find somebody else to interview that person.
Okay, that's for to make sure that, because like, that's what I talked about before, if I could fill in for folks, that, so I suppose if that person wants to be interviewed, then you're fine stepping back, and would you contact me for that one?
Yes.
And do we need to put, so I guess that'd be reviewed again next year, right?
Yes.
Do we need to put that anywhere?
Do we need to make that a policy, Mr. Doggett?
I mean, because otherwise, it could be changed at any time.
I think it would be prudent for the councils to establish the policy, it just says, every year upon the election, that-
Just be included.
You include committee assignments, such as voting on the mayor pro temp, and the PTRC, and other committees, that you just make that part of your December agenda once you square in the new members, every other year. That's what I'm used to in past governments.
Because like, you know, he and Janelle have been on, you know, doing the water, right?
Yeah.
So that wouldn't be bad. Maybe for the next meeting, we could kind of draft something like that, that just makes it more clear for those committees, so that we have that sort of established. And that's all, that's all I was kind of curious about, and to make sure that everybody-
I'll write forward the policy for your consideration.
If you'll write this down, page seven, rule eight, we already have an organization of the council, organizational meetings, it's a bit vague, you might want to tweak that a little bit, but it already talks about that, so we might have something. I want to create another policy when we already have a policy.
And really, there's some of it in the ordinance, which I think was kind of weird.
Yeah.
I think it might be better at some point to pull that from the ordinance and make it to a regular policy, so the council doesn't have to mess with law every time. Might be a little easier for a couple of things, and you might go over there and see some other things that might be easier not to have through ordinance, if that's, so, no rush on that, but maybe sometime in the next few months, we can maybe tackle all those together at one time would be a good idea, I think.
Did you hear that rule, page seven, rule eight, which policy is that?
That is the parliamentary, parliament policy?
Okay.
And then also, if you'll write down rule thirty-nine, it also talks about committees and boards. Maybe there's an opportunity where I left, Mr. Harvick.
I'm, I'm questioning this idea, why this?
Hello?
Yeah. I think we have a duty to what we sign up for, unless you have a legal reason to recuse yourself. I don't think you get to not interview someone for a committee because they have attacked you personally. If I did that, oh, come on now, like, that would kind of, I think either you have a duty, if you sign up for it, you have a duty to it, and to, unless you have a legal reason to recuse yourself. If you can't make a professional judgment call and recommend or not whether or not someone's qualified for a committee, then I don't know that you should have that position. I didn't even know that this happened until this week, and that person pulled their app, they pulled, they decided not to even volunteer when they found out he didn't want to interview them, and that's really sad for a citizen to find out, because they didn't even want to be interviewed for a committee, they no longer applied for the committee. I don't ever want that to happen to a citizen.
I didn't say, I didn't say he shouldn't be interviewed, I just said I shouldn't be the person to do it.
But I think if you're going to sign up to do it-
I don't know how, I didn't tell.
It's not, shouldn't be a secret.
But, but you did say-
But you said-
I took it that you said you didn't want to interview him, and I said, this is the situation.
I told you that, and then I called you back, and I said, if you didn't get anybody else to sit, I just don't want to sit and interview this person.
But I, I don't think that should be an option.
Honestly, I forgot that you did call me back that evening.
But I don't think that should be an option. If you're going to step up and volunteer for that, unless you have a legal reason to recuse yourself, I think you have the duty to put your personal feelings aside and interview them, and now the citizen, because, I mean, obviously hurt their feelings, and so they aren't even going to apply to you on the committee anymore, and I think that's a problem. So I would ask that unless you have a legal reason to recuse yourself, that you be willing to interview anyone who applies for a committee.
I will.
Thank you.
Any other discussion on that item?
Yeah, I just want to make sure, Mr. Doggett said he did not want to. I did tell the applicant that they pulled their application.
You told the applicant that they pulled their application?
No, I told the applicant that the interview could happen, because we didn't have a chair, we didn't have another person just besides me, and then the applicant decided to pull their application, like, just don't, I don't want to deal with it. And then I had forgotten Mr. Doggett did call me back later, but-
Same day. Same day.
Okay, but it was later.
But I, when you say later-
I didn't mean a week later, or five days later, I didn't mean that, I meant like, within a short period of time, but after that, the applicant was like, just forget it. So that was the sequence. I'm not putting blame on anybody, I'm just, I just want everybody to be, to understand what we're doing, that's it.
And I agree with you, although if we're in that spot, I think that's what we're signing up for, is to interview people, and the people that we have issues with, but...
Will not happen again. Further discussion? Remember, I'd like to make a motion to recess to close session.
I'll make the motion that we recess to close session.
Mr. Harvick? I need to do a manager's report on some announcements.
Oh, sorry.
Because I think it would benefit the public.
Sorry, I am twelve, manager of council updates.
I know you're tired, Mr. Mayor, I am too. So, project updates every month, want to do that. Bandera, we did get the value engineering back from pond engineering, and I can say, I think collectively, that Councilman Clay and Mayor Pro Temp, the Vani, and I were not happy with the amount that they proposed to charge us for value engineering. And so they're tweaking their numbers and supposed to be giving us something back. I don't know if they're going to budge on that or not, but as soon as that is done, we're very close to seventy-five percent. They have verbally told us that by late summer, so what we're, what we're anticipating is by second quarter, we'll put it out for bids, sometime in the second quarter, by third quarter, late third quarter, early fourth quarter, fourth quarter, we'll be turning dirt. So that's the update on it. A and Y Trail, there is a public informational meeting at the twenty-third here for the A and Y Trail, and I believe that's at six o'clock.
When was it, when was that?
The twenty-third. For the A and Y Trail, for informational, for public input. So if you, if you're so inclined to attend that and hear the comments, the public on the A and Y Trail, that's the twenty-third, and then as soon as that, they're going to come forth with a formal recommendation to the town board, probably in February, where it should actually be the final, and simultaneously, they are, that's Kemal and Horn, we've got three different engineers for everyone to work with. Kemal and Horn is coordinating with Freese and Nichols, which is the water pipeline. They're coordinating together to make sure the water lines go in first, so if the A and Y Trail does go down Summerfield Road, they're not digging up that trail for the water lines. So they're, they're talking, and that one's getting very close to the seventy-five percent. So anticipation is, all three projects will go to bid late second quarter, early third quarter. You all will award the bids late third quarter, start turning dirt, go later in the fourth quarter. So they're on target right now to be finished all by December of twenty-sixth. Let's pray that that still happens. Volunteer luncheon is next Friday. All of you have an invite, and please let us know if you can't make it. This is a great time to recognize all the volunteers. We get special certificates made and doing some things, and that's right here. And if you know of anybody, I sent that email out earlier this month, if you know of anybody, I don't know who was here in the last year, and my staff doesn't, so I need y'all to help me to help you to recognize the volunteers, because they, we need to do a good job of doing that, so I just encourage you to just double think. I sent out a list, and I know Councilman Doggett called somebody to my attention today that was not on the list, and I appreciate that, so. The retreat has been scheduled for the eighth, rescheduled, still to have locked in notes for that. So, signs, we are starting to enforce notify, we're starting to take down all these yard signs across town. Maintenance Department's going to be doing that, and we're going to collect them, and we're going to notify through the planning department, we're going to notify the violators, and they come get their signs. Signs are allowed in some towns, but they're not allowed at Summerfield, according to our ordinance, so I just want to give you a heads up. You might hear a little blowback from businesses. We're not going to throw them away to start with, we're going to put them in a bin behind town hall. They can come get them, because they're about twenty bucks apiece, but if they continue to put them up, they will be dealt with accordingly under our ordinance.
Does that include the ones that are nailed up?
Yes, ma'am.
What, how?
Yes, ma'am, including the Jesus signs, unfortunately, and I love Jesus. Martin Luther King Holiday, we're closed next Monday. We talked about fireworks, I would like to say the park clearing, we did meet with the DEQ, Councilman Clay and, and my staff, and we did not violate any state statutes in our clearing, and we talked about other areas that we can clear, where we can't and can't, can and can't. Justin is going to be taking some additional training to authorize us to submit reports and do that. Jeff Bacon has made significant strides in PRR requests. I think we're down to about twenty-some, Jeff, is that right?
About that.
From sixty-some, so we're making strides. He's helping Mason get activated, and so just want to let y'all know that. The last thing I'd like to say is, I will not be available tomorrow at all. I'm driving to Ohio late tonight for my father-in-law's funeral tomorrow, and I'll be out of the office Thursday and Friday. I'll be remote working, if you need me, call me, if you need me. The key there, calling, I'll be available to you, and I'll be back in Seattle on Tuesday. So that's my report, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, sir. I have number thirteen. Would anybody like to make a motion, to recess to close session?
I'll make the motion that we recess to close session per NCGS one four three dash three one eight, one one eight, three, A five, and A six.
Have a motion, and a second?
Second?
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Today's you won't be here when we get back.
I'll make the motion that we return back to our session.
Have a motion, a second?
Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, I'll make the motion that are, I'll just make the statement that we, sorry, get my, that we only discussed in-
getting my, that we only discussed NCGS 143-318.11A3.
Thank you. Any other business? Would anyone like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion if you're adjourned.
Before, before we make that, can I just say one thing? Mr. Roberts, you know, we made that change earlier with the staff. If you would just keep us abreast of how that develops, and put it on next time, just kind of let us know how things are going, since it is such a big change, if that's okay?
I'll make a motion if you're adjourned.
Have a motion, and a second, further discussion?
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned.